Hi, John. This is Sean. I'm just doing a quick sound check if you could respond.
Yep, all good.
Perfect. Thank you for confirming.
Hi, Elizabeth. It's Cheryl in the chambers. Can you please do a quick sound check?
Absolutely. I can hear you fine.
Perfect. Thank you. Andrea, can I ask you also to do that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you. Council Jolly.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hi, Everett. It's Cheryl in Chambers. Can we do a quick sound check, please? Hi, Everett. It's Cheryl in Chambers. Can we do a quick sound check, please?
Sure can. How's this?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. They're just, oh, is that better, Sean? Yeah. Hi, testing, testing. Okay.
I'll call this meeting to order. All those in favor, motion adjourned.
Hi, John. If you could just put up the recess message. Our elected officials are still doing their safety tour. Be in a couple more minutes. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, it's after one.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 1:03 on Tuesday, February 6, 2024. Sorry, attendance at the start of the meeting is 100% with Counsel Jolly virtual. Before I go any further, when I, when we conducted our last council meeting, that was completely, everybody was on Zoom because Ken and I were out of town. I asked members of council to use their checkmark and X to vote for motions. I've had feedback from Ledge that they really prefer that method, so no more typing motions into the chat, whether you're in favor or not. You will be from this time forward, be using the X and the checkmark. You'll just have to be really cognizant if you're virtual to make sure you uncheck and unX when you're done, when the vote is done. But thanks for the feedback from Ledge. We're always looking to improve. Adoption of the agenda, we have no additions or changes to the agenda, correct? All right, I need a motion. Counsel Mackay, go ahead.
Let the February 6, 2024 agenda be adopted as presented.
Perfect. Call for the vote. And honestly, as chair, I like that better because I can see now that Counsel Jolly is voted. So perfect. So I'm assuming that's unanimous. And now we are on presentations. So we have, I mentioned Global will be speaking to us later. They have registered to speak, but before we do that, I'm going to do the Founder's Day proclamation, although we're calling it, what are we calling it now? Change it. St. Albert Heritage Proclamation. And before I get into it, obviously, there's been a lot of conversation amongst this council and in the public about who we are as a city and how we want to acknowledge, honor our history, those who have contributed to making St. Albert who we are today. And I'm actually really pleased with the direction that we're going in. So we, in the chambers, we do have Christina Hardy with us and Anne Ramsden from Arts and Heritage Foundation. Tim, are you on the board? Is that, are you just hanging out here today? Just hanging out, okay? Just making sure. Because they, they had, we had some conversations after we had our last council meeting about what this would look like today. And I'll start with, it's still a work in progress. We can still improve and change if any members of council has thoughts towards it. But because Arts and Heritage Foundation have been such an integral part of the, of honestly, the light switch that we turned on in our head two years ago, that they did prepare a statement that I'm going to read exactly as written because it's quite, it's quite beautiful and it makes a lot of sense. And then we do have the proclamation. We have a proclamation most mainly because that was our council motion coming out of committee that we have a proclamation to honor the day. And we can do that this year and we can talk about it later on if we want to continue with the, with the tradition of a proclamation. And we're calling it the St. Albert Heritage Proclamation. So, so it was, this was written by Christina and but reviewed by Selina Loyet, who we all know quite well in January. So I will start now. As treaty people, indigenous and non-indigenous, we share the responsibility for this beautiful land. I think everyone here recognizes that statement. Because we state this in our city's formal land acknowledgement, right here in our council chambers, in classrooms, and at many events across our community. This beautiful land, it is a land that has brought us all here, and it is a land and this quiet Sturgeon River that continues to bring our community together today. Nearly 12,000 years ago, at the end of the last great Ice Age, retreating ice and meltwater revealed the Sturgeon River Valley etched into this land. And in according to oral histories, the people who lived in this area before the ice returned to the land they previously knew. The Naheyu, the Dene, the Nitsi, Tapae, and others returning to the land that with care and quiet comfort provided them with everything they needed to survive, to raise their families and to thrive as rich and diverse communities. All that was needed was provided by the land. And it was the land that for thousands of years brought the Métis people and their horses to this area. Oh, sorry, thousands of years later, brought the Métis people and their horses to this area. Beginning in the 1820s, Métis people associated with Fort Edmonton began settling on this particular, particular stretch of land known as the Big Lake Settlement. Employees of the Hudson Bay Company, these men and by extension, their families cared for the horses of Fort Edmonton, moving them along the Sturgeon River Valley and around Big Lake, accessing the food, water, and protection provided by the land. To the west at Lac Saint-Anne, there was another Métis community being cared for by the land. It was this Métis community that brought the first Catholic missionaries to what is now Alberta. And it is, it was this oblate mission that on January 14, 1861, selected a new mission stop atop a snowy hill in the Métis community of Big Lake overlooking the Sturgeon River Valley. And over the coming months and years, many of the Métis families of Lac Saint-Anne chose to follow the mission and join their relatives in the community now known as St. Albert. In the following decades, Francophone families from Quebec and across American Midwest also moved to St. Albert, wishing to live in a community where they could speak their French language like the Métis people, practice their Catholic faith, faith, and build a life for themselves from and upon this beautiful land. In 1904, St. Albert officially became a town. And as years passed, services such as fire protection, weed control were established, sidewalks built, trees planted, and people from many different parts of the world came and settled on this stretch of land. Over the course of the 20th century, our community rooted in the land and positioned along the river continued to grow. In 1977, we became a city. And it was time to build, when it was time to build a new municipal building, indigenous architect Douglas Cardinal designed St. Albert Place as a reflection of our rolling prairie landscape, the brick of St. Albert Place hugging the gentle curves of the river. The Sturgeon River Valley continues to bring us together as a community today as we walk along our extensive trail system, gather for festivals such as festivals, such as the children's festivals and Rockin' August, and reflect on our community's layered and complicated history at the Healing Garden. It is a land which has brought us all here. It is the land upon which our community is built, and it is a land that makes us one. Bringing together many different languages and cultures and beliefs to continue growing as a community rooted in the land nestled along the quiet Sturgeon River. It's almost like poetry. Beautifully written. I can give you guys all the copy of this if you'd like it. You can clap, Counsel. Why don't I read the proclamation and then actually, if any one of you wants to say a few words, you absolutely 100% can. Okay, so whereas the area known by the Cree and I always mispronounce it. So here we go. Mississauga Quin has been a First Nations gathering place for at least 5,000 years. And whereas Métis in the employ of the Hudson Bay Company and the Northwest Company worked and resided. And whereas Métis Freeman, former employees of the fur trade companies settled with their families on land near and around Big Lake. And whereas in 1861, the St. Albert Mission was founded by Father LaCombe and Bishop Tache named in St., it's, and they named it St. Albert. And whereas the St. Albert Mission grew quickly to a population of 700 by the year of 1870. And whereas the St. Albert Mission became a village in the year 1899, a town in 1904, a new town in 1954, and run without an elected council, but by a Board of Administrators. And then in 1963, it was declared a town again, and an election for council was called. And whereas St. Albert became a city in 1977. So now therefore, I, Kathy Heron, Mayor of the City of St. Albert, do hereby ask the residents of St. Albert to help recognize those who have shaped and continue to shape our history and built this vibrant city, recognizing all those who have cared for and cultivated this beautiful land, fostering a rich and diverse tapestry of cultures that continues to thrive and flourish in our city as we continue to grow and open our communities to others and their contributions. There we go. So I'm going to allow counsel to say a few words if you want to, Counsel Broadhead. And then I'm going to ask Christina and Anne, if you want to come down as well to, to receive the proclamation. Did you have something, Counsel Broadhead? Or you can just clap if you want.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to say something, Madam Mayor. I-
Well, um, I thank you for the opportunity to say something, Madam Mayor, I, I'm, I'm a proud resident of St. Albert for forty-four years now, and to hear our history spoken of and celebrated once a year, uh, does something for me. And I think as a community, uh, taking fifteen minutes once a year to acknowledge that is, is worthy, because our town, our city is worthy of celebrating who and what we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All I can say is I, I feel St. Albert is special for a lot, for a lot of reasons, and a lot of it is because of the location and the land, the river and the hills, um, lived here my whole life, and there's some unique aspect that sometimes is intangible, but it is a special place, so. Let's, uh, all gather in front here, and we'll ask Christina, and Anne, are you gonna come down too? Okay, and we'll, uh, pass it off and take a picture. For the record, I did give Anne and Christina the opportunity to say something, but they, they passed, so that's good. Alright, uh, next, we do have a registered, um, presentation from Edmonton Global. This is an annual thing that we have done, I think it varies times, sometimes at committee. I think timing wise, it was best to do it at council this year. So we have Jason Randawa, is Jason online with us?
No, I don't see him online.
Oh. And Chris McLeod? Really? Okay, were they given a specific time?
Actually, they were supposed to be in person, they had told us.
They're not here. Do you have contact information for them, Mike? Okay, alright, if they arrive a little bit later, I will allow them to speak later, um, pardon? Maybe they think we started too. Because we did change, you're right. Okay, well, let's go on, um. There is, the next thing on our agenda is business arising from presentations, is there anything from the, um, Heritage Day, uh, proclamation? Seeing none, um, when we have the Edmonton Global one, obviously, I'll come, come back to business arising from that one as well. So let's go to consent agenda, I need somebody to read it in, um, but we are polling, uh, seven point two. Council Jolly, um, has a small amendment she wants to make, so, thank you, Council Bermansky, I'll get you to read it in.
Thank you to the mayor that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And seven point one, request for council motion from Arts Development Advisory Committee, Public Arts Lifecycle and Maintenance Fund.
Perfect, thank you for that, I'll call for the vote. Uh, voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. So, uh, the first thing we're gonna attend to then is, um, oh, I guess I could read what we'd approved for seven point one. Which was?
Mayor Heron.
Yes.
Just a point of order for a second.
Absolutely.
My, uh, number three, when you were talking about presentation delegations, what, I, I, what did you just call the present? Excuse me, what did you just call the presentation? Because in my notes, it's called Founder's Day proclamation.
Yeah, I, it's St. Albert Heritage Day.
Should we change that?
Yes, we'll update it in a minute.
Thanks. Alright, on consent, we, uh, had the following motion that fourteen thousand dollars for her to be pulled from the Public Art Lifecycle and Maintenance Fund for the removal and storage of the color fields to at St., uh, for St. Joseph Street. And that ten thousand dollars be pulled from the Public Art Lifecycle Maintenance Fund for the removal and storage of healthy communities at eighteen Perrin Street. Alright, uh, Council Jolly, you have pulled off the next one. Um, I don't, I assume there's no presentation for seven point two? No.
That's correct.
Okay, so Council Jolly, do you have any questions before I get, allow you to read in your changes?
No.
Is there anyone, when, anyone else have any questions? Okay, go ahead and read it in.
That C C S zero four public art policy be rescinded and that a replacement policy be brought forward by Q two twenty twenty-four.
Okay, before I accept it, I'll open it up to questions on the changed motion. Seeing none, I'll accept it, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that, just to make sure it doesn't get forgotten, that's all.
That's, I think, a good idea, you, you guys have no objections to that, Mr. Fletcher?
No, we don't.
Alright, I see no questions, no debate, do you have any, anything else? Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously, okay, thanks for adding that in, Council Jolly, it's probably a good idea to keep, um, a record of that and make sure it's not lost, okay? Next on our agenda is Mr. Dooley, he's here. Uh, Edmonton Metro Region Board briefing, so we have a, we've got a board meeting on Thursday, February eighth, uh, Mr. Dooley quite often gives us different avenues to brief us ahead of time, sometimes a memo, but it's nice to have you here in council. I don't know if this is gonna be a more regular and preferred method of our briefings, but I'm sure that's, it gives council more of a chance to go over it, so I will open it up to Christine Anderson, are you doing the presentation, or Trevor, are you introducing? How are we doing this?
Yeah, Madam Mayor might just provide some introductory comments, and, uh, yeah, so from an administrative perspective, we do try to provide a verbal briefing to council in advance of E M R B meetings when they align with, uh, council and committee, uh, meetings within the same week, so, uh, this week luckily kind of the stars aligned and, uh, they fall within the same week. So in terms of the agenda package for E M R B this Thursday, um, there's three items that we wanted to provide a bit of an overview, uh, to council, which have previously gone through the Audit and Finance Committee at E M R B, which Council Broadhead sits on. Um, there's a couple of other topics that, uh, should council still choose, we would recommend be discussed in camera in aligned with sections twenty-one and twenty-four one A of FOIP. But, uh, without further ado, I'll, I'll pass it along to Ms. Anderson, who will provide an update on the E M R B's budget, business plan, and delegation of the movies.
Okay, thanks, Trevor.
Afternoon, Baron Council. Um, so as Trevor said, the three things that I'm going to be discussing with you have already been, um, approved and recommended on by the Audit and Finance Committee for approval by the board. So the draft business plan reflects ongoing support for the three core strategic priorities of the E M R B, enabling a prosperous region, stewarding our natural assets, and building enduring partnerships. The business plan includes the following updates, um, that reflect, uh, both board and committee feedback that was provided through December and early in January. So the first is that under strategy one point one, the wording now reflects the regional growth study, um, the work that was expanded, and this is in response to, um, the motions that were brought forward by the City of St. Albert and the Duke County, and are being funded through an Alberta Community Partnership grant that was both brought forward by the Duke County and supported by the City of St. Albert. Uh, the other big, um, note is that, um, under strategy three point three, they have included tangible actions in the business plan to, uh, reflect collaboration with our First Nations, including organizing a meet and greet between the board and neighboring First Nations chiefs and councils, as well as work with indigenous leadership to determine a process and opportunities for meaningful engagement with indigenous communities in the tenure review of the growth plan. And finally, opportunities to explore with Enoch First Nation to advocate for upgrades to Highway six twenty-eight. Um, the other, uh, key change under the growth plan was an expansion under one point three to, um, address key actions related to housing, and these include completing a regional housing needs assessment to better understand the current state and address any potential gaps in the region. Um, to develop an integrated regional housing strategy across the housing continuum, and advocating to other orders of government for investment to address gaps across the housing continuum in the region. With respect to the draft budget, um, this budget was reviewed and generally supported by the Audit and Finance Committee, and reflects the feedback from both the board and, um, Audit and Finance Committee. Generally speaking, the, uh, E M R B budget has, um, approximately, an operating budget of approximately four million a year with a current structural deficit of one million dollars per year, resulting from a reduction in the Alberta Community Partnership Grant funding provided by the Government of Alberta. The draft twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven budget assumes the A C P funding remains at one million dollars. That will result in a deficit of twenty-two thousand dollars in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, and will increase to nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, when all of the deferred revenues that are currently in the budget have been expended. Of note, St. Albert's membership contribution is the same for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. The Audit and Finance Committee has recommended that a committee of the whole meeting be called, um, following the release of the provincial budget, um, which is expected at the end of February, to have a more detailed conversation around this structural deficit that exists within the E M R B budget. And then finally, um, the last piece on, uh, the agenda for the M R B this Thursday will be a change to the delegation of authorities, um, policy, and this came about because of a new line item was, that was added to the E M R B budget for emergent issues that is at the discretion of the C A O. So A F C members reviewed the policy and agreed that the proposed amendments reflect the direction provided to E M R B administration to enable the C A O to address these emergent opportunities, while at the same time mitigating risks and ensuring transparency and accountability for these expenditures. And that's all I have.
Awesome, Council Hughes has a question.
Just a quick question, what is our contrib-, you said the contribution amount's not changing, but what is the actual amount?
Uh, approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, that's it, thanks.
That's it? I see no more questions. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, thank you, um, with the potential deficit of a million dollars on four million, that's, you know, twenty-five percent deficit, that's pretty significant to try and overcome. If, if that money doesn't come through, did the Audit and Finance Committee even have any discussions as how that might be managed, uh, it, it's, um, such a significant potential impact, but.
Uh, perhaps Council Kilik will let, uh, Council Brian respond to that question.
Great question, Council Kilik, and as a matter of fact, we, there was a, a, a significant amount of discussion over the last number of meetings on it, and hence the recommendation that, uh, uh, that the board, because the board ultimately, uh, defines, uh, what the budget will be, have a, uh, committee of the whole post the election, or post the, uh, budget. Um, because our advocacy strategy is around still maintaining a four million dollar a year budget. But we won't know, but certainly, if we don't, uh, get the increase, then the board is gonna have to wrestle with it, uh, but the, but the committee's got some ideas, but it'll be.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess it, wait, wait and see approach, and then deal with it at a full, yeah, E M R B scout to work out the details as the rate.
Yeah, and we have enough, I guess, in reserves or whatever.
For twenty-five, twenty-six, we're okay, it's the year after, but, uh, the eye is on the ball here, but thank you, uh, Council Kilik.
Right, Council Mackay.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for maybe those people that are listening, this is mandated, we, we have to, um, belong to this management growth board. Unlike maybe Edmonton Global, we're mandated to be on this.
Thanks for the clarification. See no more questions. We got more though, right?
Yeah, so, so there are essentially two other, uh, agenda items, as was noted, um, specific related to governance as it looks at the dispute resolution component, and the second piece relating to a specific motion, um, related to governance as well.
Right.
Uh, and so because those things, uh, under the, uh, um, regulations that Trevor mentioned, sort of searching for the word, um, right, we'd recommend going in camera to discuss those two particular items.
Okay. Um, I need a motion then to go in camera.
I think we have one ready, but flash it up, yeah.
We have a member motion coming on Thursday that I don't even know if everyone's aware of. I don't, are they all aware of the member motion? Okay, yeah. Okay, go ahead, yeah.
That counts move in camera to discuss the matter pursuant to sections twenty-one and twenty-four one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act.
Alright. Um, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously, and I'm just looking at you guys, I don't need to take the host, you guys can just create a breakout.
No, I, I'm comfortable with staff, if you are remaining in the room for this.
Oh, we're not going in here? Yeah, there's people, and, and I think it's probably safer to go in here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, alright, we're gonna go in council lounge, so we'll just need a breakout room for Council Jolly, and what? Okay. Okay.
All right, we are back in chambers, but we are essentially still in camera. So the first thing we need to do is reconvene into the public realms. So who wants to make that motion?
Motion to reconvene in public.
Public realm. I don't know if that's actually a motion, but all those in favor? Oh, Mike made it. Okay, so what do we need? Oh, just show hands. Okay, okay. Counsel Jolly in favor. Yeah. Okay, so we're back in public. We also have a motion just to receive that report as information. Counselor Broadhead, you want to do that one? Okay. So moved all those in favor. We'll just do a show of hands again. Pardon? Oh, you got that one? Okay, so call for the vote. It's okay. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. All right. Can somebody queue up the share song Turn Back Time? Pretend we'll pretend it's one o'clock. We do have our presenters from Edmonton Global here today. Jason Randawa. He is on the Board of Directors and Chris McLeod, VP of Global Marketing and Communications is here. Is Kristen with us too? Kristen is with us. She's Engagement Coordinator. You guys all know that Edmonton Global does do a round of engagement sessions around this time of year. And of course, this year is probably extra special, extra important, given some of the developments in the region. So I will turn it over to the two of you to see what format you want. Normally, we have five minutes for presenters, but I just have a feeling because there's going to be some questions and I'm just going to relax that. You guys need to have your time to present. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you, Your Worship. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see everybody. My name is Jason Randava. I am on the board of Edmonton Global. I have been since we stood the organization up back in 2018, although this will be my probably my last meeting with you folks as a board member because in April, my two terms are up. So happy to be here again. I am a resident of St. Albert. I think I've mentioned that to council previously. So I've been living here since 2002 and have seen the city evolve as you have. And Chris McCloud is here as well. Maybe I'll let Chris introduce himself quickly and then we'll kind of get back into it.
Great. Thanks, Jason. It's wonderful to see all of you again. Chris McCloud, Vice President, Global Marketing and Communications at Global, also proud resident of St. Albert. Have, you know, been the past Chair of St. Albert's Economic Sustainability Advisory Board, have served on the Board of Directors of the local chamber and still quite involved with the chamber. And yeah, happy to be here with you today.
So given, given the venue, what I was going to do was launch into a three hour sermon about, you know, the benefits of municipal government, but just kidding. Actually, what we want to do today is really open it up to you first off and and open it up to you if you have questions. Because as, as the mayor has mentioned, there's been some interesting developments. Interesting is a word that we could use in the last number of weeks. And so we'd like to listen to you and give you a chance to just ask us some questions. And then we do have a few questions for you as well.
Okay.
But we'll start with that if that's okay.
So questions from our council first?
Absolutely.
All right. Counsel Jolly already has her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I mean, I'll get right to it. So we've had several municipalities vote to leave the organization. And from my perspective, that, that looks like it's, it's not sustainable. So, you know, is there something to be done to, to help reverse those decisions? Or how could it be sustainable without those members in place?
So it's unfortunate that we've had the members take the actions that they've taken so far, but this is not the first time. If you recall, but three years ago, we did have a few municipalities also provide notices of withdrawal only to then reverse those based on new elections that came into effect. From a funding perspective, it will have an impact, but it's not going to have a significant impact to us. You know, just given the funding formula, the majority of the funding that we need to survive and continue to thrive and do the good work that we're doing will be in place, but we are looking for some other options. We're always doing that in terms of looking at things. So I just want to reiterate something. The mission of Edmonton Global and the reason we were set up remains the mission. It is a regional mission to put this region on the international map with investors and to ensure that those municipalities, whether quite frankly, they are part of Edmonton Global or not, are represented. Now, we would like everybody to be in place, obviously. But our, we have a regional mandate. So just because we've got, you know, a municipality or a few or whatever that have decided that at this point in time, they're wondering about their membership. I'll reiterate a couple of things. There's still an off ramping period. So they still have two years of participating fully in the organization. And we, we recognize that and that's important to us. But we're going to continue to do the work. I think that's really what I'd like to leave you with is this is regional work to benefit the region and we're going to continue to do that.
I guess just a really quick follow up question. What do you think the message is from those organizations that are leaving? Like, is there? You know, is there a take home piece that you're getting from, from so many organizations deciding to leave?
Well, to be honest, some of these were very, very abrupt and, and we had no warning. And so that, that was a bit troubling that there was no warning or no notification or no sort of heads up. Part of why we're having these, these engagements with council, it is part of our annual process, but it really is about listening. There was an extraordinary shareholder meeting that occurred a couple of weeks ago where all of the shareholders came together with our board chair to have a very frank discussion, I think, about what's going on. There have been some very good developments coming out of that in terms of a subcommittee that's been formed. Mayor Heron, you're part of that. So the organization definitely wants to listen to the shareholders. But we're still trying to understand, counselor, what some of the rationale is. I can give you some speculation. That's a little B. I mean, all of you folks are under budget pressure, right? With what's been going on lately with the economy and things. That's definitely something that we think is, is at play at this point. So folks are looking at, you know, every single dollar and cent that they're spending. And then having to think about that as it relates to priorities within their particular municipality. However, again, this is not an immediate action. This is something that has a tail on it and it's going to take some time. As this has happened in the past, we've seen people reverse course. So we'll see what happens. And I think we're here today to listen to the, you know, to you folks as it relates to the St. Albert context. Some of my colleagues are doing that with all of the other councils and we'll continue to do that.
Hey, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, thank you guys for, for coming in and demonstrating your commitment to the region and speaking about it and, and hearing your, your passion around sort of advancing the, the regional perspective of economic development. And so my question, I don't know if it's really a question or maybe just a comment. The value proposition for Edmonton Global to me is, is compelling. I'm wondering if, if you guys trumpet your own horn often enough. Because when, when, when something happens and, and something comes, we get an email saying, you know, this is happening and that's all well and good, but but I mean, you got however many municipalities engaged and and part of that is keeping everybody on board and running, rowing in the same direction. So I mean, I'm a real proponent of regionalism and working together. I think we've got a world beating region right here. I honestly, I'd like to hear the stories as a success and I'd like to see you guys here more often, quite honestly. I use guys, you know, just as a, as a term, but you know. So you comment about that?
I appreciate your comments. I mean, I think it's an interesting dynamic, right? When you start to think about the number of shareholders we have, the complexity of your organizations, the numbers of people, we've also got confidential requirements on us in a lot of cases as deals are going through the, through the pipeline. So as much as there is a lot of exciting things, in some cases, we can't really disclose anything until something has occurred. What I can tell you is from, from my perspective as a board member, when we started to where we are, I mean, when we started, this was really a mission given to a group of, of people coming out of the, the work that you folks quite frankly did. You know, within, within municipal governance, saying, we want to put ourselves on the map and we want our organization to do that. The first few years, we're really getting it stood up. You know, we had to find additional funding, secure additional funding, which we did, get a team in place, start to build. When I fast forward to where we are now, five and a half years later, and I'll give you a few examples. When I think about the impact and the awareness of this organization, as well as now the region based on the work in places like the Middle East and some of the conversations that are, that are happening there, it is compelling. There are things on the, you know, on the books and we'll see where they go and I can't disclose them. I wish I could. But there, there are some transformative investments potentially on the horizon here that can be transformative, not only for the region, but quite frankly, the province and the country. But they're complex. They have a lot of moving parts. They are not small. And they're going to take time to work through. So what I'm hearing is a desire to have more of that intelligence. I can take that back and we can try and work with management to see if we can figure that out. The, the risk is, you know, because of how sensitive some of these things are. And I mean, we're not only talking about risk in terms of the specific deal, there are public company. There are even geopolitical ramifications to some of this, given the nature of what some of these topics are. Because, you know, in, in one example, it's like, we're going to place a bet and we're picking, we've got sort of three in the world on the shortlist. What happens if that investment lands here versus it lands in some of the other options? Again, it will be transformative wherever this goes because of the nature of what some of these deals look like. That's an example. Now that's something that doesn't happen every day. That's a very strategic thing. It's been, it's been in the works now for even a couple of years. Okay? Then you got the, you know, the base hits that, you know, the, the things that are happening where we've got companies who are deciding this is a region I want to be in. It has the labor force representation that I like. It's got the land availability that I like. It's got the servicing that I like. It's got the post secondaries. It's got all those things, right? And that's, and that's a lot of the, the base hit work that occurs. But you know, it's, it's about landing the deals absolutely, but it's also about just doing the work. And part of this, I think, is if you have an opportunity to come on some of these missions with Edmonton Global, I would encourage you to try and come. So if we're going on one of these missions overseas or, you know, to cop or whatever, those kinds of, come and see what's happening and come and participate in some of the discussions. Because I think it would change your opinion about the nature of what we're trying to do. There's the tactical, we landed so many things, which is great. And those are going to happen. There's the strategic stuff and the transformative stuff too, that's really important. And, and you don't always get credit for it because it takes a long time, right? So that's just the nature of the beast.
Yeah. If I could maybe just chime in, just to touch on that, that Council Broadhead, I think one of the other pieces is we've, we've really been trying to build the brand and reputation of the Edmonton metropolitan region, not the brand and reputation of Edmonton Global. So it's, it's because we only have so much money and so much kind of people time. Really, the focus of attention has been on building that international brand of, of this place rather than of, of who we are and what we're doing as an organization. And I think we're, we're coming to realize that that's, that while it was a thing we needed to do, but probably now we actually need to put a little bit more emphasis into what are we actually doing? What are the, what's the value we're bringing? And so there's a higher level of awareness of what we're actually doing as, as deals and transforming the region.
Yeah. Yeah, just as a final comment, I, I I don't, what, what I'm asking for is not easy because I recognize that that large negotiations are complex and there, and there's a requirement of confidentiality, all the rest. But there's a, there's a a rub there somewhere because you gotta get 13 municipalities come along with you. And behind 13 mayors is councils, and then you've got municipalities, 13 municipalities are saying, hold on, what, what's happening? Because you're spending our money and we don't know where it's going. And so there's, there's the rub, I guess. And that's what I'm asking you to just get get to keep your eye on both balls, I guess, if you know what I mean. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I can add to, I didn't get to go on an international mission, but I did go to Ottawa with the team in May. And Malcolm and the team were so impressive on, on, on the meetings that I did attend. Malcolm just knows his stuff inside and out and you can skew data and numbers and it was amazing. My problem with that mission, it was so, so focused on hydrogen. And, and then we also had one meeting with the United Arab Emirates about air travel. So hydrogen and air, once again, St. Albert very much feels like we do not take, we will see no return or value. The region will, I'll give you that, but there's so much focus on these two conversations that, that we don't really see the value in that we're, we would like to, and this is me personally, maybe see some more focus on pharmaceuticals and agri foods and all the other sectors that we're trying to attract. But maybe it's just been a busy couple of years on those two fronts, but yeah, go ahead. But I, I will echo that the, the missions do open your eyes.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's well said. I would say that this year we've closed more deals in life sciences than in any other sector. And when we look ahead to what's coming for some of those really big transformational things, transportation logistics really is, it's probably the biggest area of our, of our deal flow. And I think when you look at where is the biggest advantages of St. Albert, especially when you look at that, the Lakeview Business Park that's coming online. Like, that's really going to be a supply chain logistics play in many ways. So the, the work that's being done right now in that space that connects, you know, shipping into the Port-au-Prince Rupert in Vancouver, the CN line that runs right, you know, almost to the edge of your community. You know, the, the trucking lines that run north, south, east, west and the connection to the airport all really have a big play. So I think you'll start to see those pieces coming together. And maybe historically, the airport hasn't been as much of a connection to St. Albert, but I, I really believe the work we're doing. And what we see coming, that's going to change both for the international and potentially for villain.
Okay, cool. Counsel Brumansky.
Thank you, and thank you for visiting us today. And I do have a few questions for you. You had mentioned that some of the, you know, the municipalities that are leaving Edmonton Global, you know, it was an abrupt exit in, in your opinion. When they did mention that they were leaving, did they mention that there was a communication breakdown? Because generally you don't abruptly leave something unless you haven't been communicated to and it, it would be something that would probably have been brewing for some time. So was it, was the communication or lack of mentioned to you at that point in time or not?
He probably, he could probably know more than I do, but that was. Yeah, I, I think I want to be a little bit careful not to get into the, the weeds of each council because I think we're still in the process of diagnosing what's happened.
Right.
So there's been a variety of things we're just starting to learn. And again, really, the first time that these councils spoke to us was that extraordinary shareholder meeting on January 25th, which was almost entirely in camera. So the work that's happening now is really to, to go a little bit more in depth and to learn those things. But I would, I would suspect the communication and maybe more than that, like a really deep sense of engagement probably is at the heart of some of this.
Okay. And has anyone mentioned, you know, wanting to see more tangible assets like? Okay, and has anyone mentioned, you know, wanting to see more tangible assets, like something they can see completed? Have you heard that?
Uh, ab- absolutely, and I think, you know, the overall play is is the region as a whole. So you know, it's knowing that when a deal lands in one place, that it will have indirect and induced benefits and others. That one project will and will attract other projects across the region, and sometimes that's services. So it's, there's a mix of the, what am I getting directly? And a mix of, we understand that this will lift everyone. Uh, you know, I had a good conversation with Mayor Choi in Stony Plain last month. And one of the things that they've said is that they never actually thought they would have a direct investment in Stony Plain. They thought they would be having. More of these knock on uh investments. Uh, but last year, we helped them land the biggest investment they've had in the history of Stony Plain. Uh, with English Bay, and now we're working with them on bringing in more companies within English Bay's supply chain. That ideally, there's more companies landing. So I think it's, it's, it's this anticipation or this expectation that, you know, the water's being lifted for all boats. But we're also really trying hard to land deals in every single community.
Okay, and I have two more questions. The two-year exit plan, like I I'm assuming that was that from the beginning, why, why do you have that in place?
Well, part of the reason that that was built into the structure is to allow for a transition that's actually one that can be managed effectively. So, you know, we've got, we've got. I think what was recognized at the front end was the cycles that are a part of the composition of your world. And also, you know, for the organization to have um enough funding certainty that it have, if it has to replace something, it's got time to do that. Um, so you know, just maybe a comment to your previous question about about outcomes. You know, it's inter- that's an interesting thing, right? Like, and and I'll, I'm from the business world, so I'll maybe talk about that. You know, everybody says. How'd they do last year? How are you doing this quarter, right? And people look at the the financial statements. But that's like a result of a whole bunch of stuff that then ended up with that being the outcome. It's a derivative of a bunch of other work that's occurred. And I think part of this is also perhaps reframing and rethinking a little bit about what. We communicate in terms of the things that are leading to some of these structural changes in terms of reputation, awareness. Those kinds of things that will ultimately lead to outcome. And I think the other thing that needs to be discussed is, you know, the the direct and indirect benefits. I mean, obviously, we can't have deals land um everywhere, right? We have to have deals land where it makes sense. And depending on the nature of what's in the pipeline, you can't really necessarily predict that. And quite frankly, our job is to showcase the region and make sure for the investor that they have the best set of options to make a good decision for them. It's going to really suit their thing. But I think what people need to understand is the systemic impacts of this. Right? I mean, it's sort of like looking at, you know, I look at the region, you know, here's a metaphor, you know, this is like a body, right? Lots of different organs. Okay, so the direct benefit of the air coming in is the lungs, but the body, you know. There there's other organs that get the benefit of the oxygen that's breathed into it, and I think as the region grows, I mean, you've seen this in other jurisdictions that are. That are larger. So you think about the GTA, right? As Toronto expanded and became what it became, companies decided we have to look outward and and, you know. Mississauga benefited, some of these other smaller communities benefited from that. So, you know, and then we've got the example in Stony Plain where I think, yeah, Mayor Choi and he and I've talked about this. I don't think he ever expected they were going to get major investment. His big hope was they were going to get community development, population growth, housing, that sort of a thing was going to be the real benefit. You never know when a company might say, this is where I want to be. And again, I think our obligation is to make sure we understand the value proposition of every single aspect of the region, right? This the St. Alberts, the Stony Plains, the Sturgens, et cetera, not just the Edminton's. And make sure that that is being served up very effectively to the audience and that they make an informed decision. But that's really the job.
Okay, and my last question is related to a forward slash, or some would call it forward slash flash. You know, the event. So what's your greatest uh success that you can, you know, portray to us that you've achieved through those events?
Uh, thank you for that question. So I I think the 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 purpose of forward slash really is to bring together the Edmonton region's business community. We do a lot of things where we bring investors from around the world here. And one of the pieces that we saw was was kind of missing, especially coming out of COVID, was this really unified business community. So forward slash is almost exclusively about bringing that community together. Uh, the event was a way to kickstart that process. So we now have um. Uh, a steering committee of that that is made up of three business leaders across the region. Uh, Joan Hertz, Brian Basio and Angela Fong. They also have a a number of tiger teams now that have been structured inside that, that are again, all business leaders. Tackling four major issues that we're trying to uh kind of enhance across our community. So it's, it's really this purposeful work that's being done to get our business community here to be actively engaged in growing our economy. Uh, attracting, you know, more youth, making us more portable, taking advantage of some of the things like the AI expertise that exists here. And actually really making sure that businesses that are here are doing it. Um, I think the other piece that I I think I'm quite happy about with that event is that almost all of that event was privately funded. Almost all of that came from the private sector sponsors. Uh, there was only about sixty seven thousand that was spent by Edmonton Global on that. Uh, so I think that's a, that's a pretty big success as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Council Ramensky. Uh, Council McKay.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for coming. I really appreciate it. Um. I I under, I mean, it's real interesting because you you actually kind of maybe responded and and part of my. Question was going to be related to what Mayor Heron identified too, is maybe what I saw. As maybe too much of a focus on one or two sectors versus the other sectors, which I think are probably just as exciting, if not more exciting. And not understanding how or how that's communicated or maybe um identifying how that could be better communicated. Because Jason, you identified the value proposition and I think you've got to be able to, in my opinion, you've got to be able to come across those municipalities. I mean, whether or not you got to, you got to be able to say, this is the value proposition and I don't, I think. Our history is, we fail with when we were looking at the EIA uh improvement fund or they to attract uh back. Uh, I I couldn't connect. That couldn't, that couldn't connect to me because of course, I mean, I I see benefit to some parts of the region. And yes, I like your analogy or our metaphor around, uh, you know, breathing and all that, but. You, you, I think, I think Edmonton Global has to do much better job. I'm sorry, Chris, this is your job. I think somehow you have to do a much better job back into the individual communities as to what you are. I don't know whether that's sponsoring more events or being involved, like we have a business forum that we run. Uh, now instead of having, you know, the the uh equivalent to um the organization you run, the name just left me. But I think that's for me, one of the challenges, because I mean, you've got so many exciting things, but we just don't hear about it. Because we're always focusing on when we see Edmonton Global, it's hydrogen, it's the airport, and we're not. I'm personally not seeing all the advances. I I think I know what's happening on some of the AI and technology and some of the other sectors. But I think that's where I'm, that's where I struggle. And I understand that Edmonton Global is not a economic development. Small that we're not, I'm not trying to compete with the Red Deers or Grand Prairies or, and even the Calgarees. I'm trying to, I'm trying to compete with. Present the region to the world and I I get that, and I think that's where the value is of Edmonton Global. I just kind of think you've got to be able to communicate that back to the community better.
Yeah.
Because I, I can s- say and say that's where I see the value. But honestly, people do look at tangible results. Yes, you can say Lakeview. But until I get a English Bay or until I get something else, I I got, I've got nothing.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I I mean, those are, those are great comments. So a couple of things from my perspective and then, you know, Chris is probably going to want to weigh in. I can, I can guarantee you, the conversations we're having at the board table are not just hydrogen and the airport. They're much more comprehensive than that. I think part of the um. Part of the reality of the of the budget we do have, and you know, you you might think it's big, it's not, like when you think of the mandate and the number of sectors. We could be triple the size and we probably still wouldn't have enough money to do really the job we want. So what happens sometimes is with the budget as it is. Certain initiatives because of either our federal counterparts, provincial counterparts, whatever momentum with some of those international conversations. Messaging may not necessarily seem as balanced as it needs to be. Now, that's our, that's a problem. And I think part of this is making sure that you do understand that what we're offering is much broader than that. We do see all of the sectors you mentioned, AI, food and agriculture, absolutely. I mean, food and agriculture is so so key here. And even in terms of energy transition, like, one of the things that I like to talk about is that, hydrogen is a part of the mix. LNG is not going away. LNG will be a part of the mix. There's clean diesel technologies that are Alberta made that we can actually look at. A lot of that stuff. You know, is has a small footprint. It's not unreasonable to think about some of those landing in smaller jurisdictions. I think, again, what what you're reinforcing to me is the need to engage on the grass, on the ground a bit more. And and come and say, hey, listen, this is actually what's going on and I hear it about some of this stuff out there in the public and it's maybe getting picked up. Here's the other things that are happening, rest assured. Um, because, because it is, it is much broader than those two particular issues.
Yeah, no, those are just my observations.
Oh, yeah, it's all good. Um, Council Kilik.
Yeah, a little bit of a, I guess, summary and Jason, Chris, it's always great to see you guys uh here and or at Costco. Or wherever that may be. Um, super important that that you are residents of St. Albert, but also on the board. So you you have both perspectives, but from a, from this council's perspective, you know, Lakeview is our number one. Probably two, three and four key strategies that we need to get. Done and, you know, business attraction in in that area. So I I I'd like to understand just how you can. Both, that's, that's a very local initiative, but it's very important to us. How does that get woven into? Part of Edmonton Global's um strategy when you're out there talking about even. You know, you talked about some of the bigger things, but but even just the the base hits.
Yeah.
Be- because it i- it's return on investment, it's linkages, it's priorities, it's.
Yeah.
All of those things. Well, how does that? How how can you help us kind of without overlapping what we're doing? We're, we're developing, we we're going to hire a marketing person, we're, we're doing a bunch of stuff, but how do they, how do the two fit together?
So let me give you my two cents then, I'll let Chris weigh in. Um, and thank you for that question. I think it's really important. I think, I think it starts with understanding what that is, what the local value prop is and and what your priorities are. And that's, you know, maybe doing a better job engaging with Mike and the team and understanding what's really, what's in the pipeline, what's happening? What are some of the initiatives that are coming? And then weaving that into some of the things Chris already mentioned, right? Like, the fact that you have proximity to Villeneuve, the the rail line, the transportation logistics opportunities. And likely maybe sharing more openly with some of those EDOs in a confidential manner. And again, we're going to have to make sure the right. The right boundaries are in place, but some of those opportunities to create that tie-in. Because I, I mean, I can tell you again, luckily, I get to see a lot of this stuff behind the curtain. The linkages are there. I've just maybe think we need to explore improved opportunities to engage again on the ground. Share what's going on more actively. I know that was happening very early on in global. The local EDO network and this and the staff at global were very connected. I can assume perhaps that that connection has been less uh less tight in the last year to eighteen months. And I can think of some of that maybe is because of the international, you know, work the team's done. And again, limited resources. But what, but I hear you, and I think we have to take away the fact that it's really critical because I do see it. I absolutely see it. And I mean, I see that from a global perspective. I also see that as somebody who's been in St. Albert, again, since two thousand and two. And have seen what we've done with Ray Gibbons and seen some of the stuff that's happening is you kind of look at how that connects. And it's just, I think it's just a matter of connecting those dots together and then putting joint strategies together to execute.
Oh, I chime in. And I'm trying to think of how how big of an answer to give to that. So if you go back, yeah, check your watch. Um. Uh, if you go back like twenty years ago, uh, uh, Charlene Zoltenko, Mike House and I. Really wrote the strategy for the Edmonton Chamber or the St. Albert Chamber of Commerce that that put this pitch in to to develop that land. Uh, the times now we're starting to run out of available land. And I mean, it it's taken a long time to go from the, we think this is a thing that our community needs. To now we're maybe eighteen months to two years from having projects be ready to land in it. Um, so it's. I I think Mike's team and the team in your in your active department at Bill are are very good and are very focused on this. Uh, our team, probably about half of our team is going to come here on March the seventh and do a tour of Lakeview. Uh, sit down with Mike and team and talk about, um, what are you pitching? What are you going after? Who do you think the ideal companies that should be landing there are? And we're going to build a bit of a joint strategy that starts to target this. Uh, we also have a grant request in with the province around getting some drone footage of of the whole region. Lakeview is one of the areas that we want to do a kind of a three D mapping overview uh as a real tangible, we can take out to the market. Um, I think once we've got a really good sense of of how to how to go after the opportunities here. It's, again, it's it's sitting down with your team, but it's also looking at what are the shows we're going to, what things are we speaking at around the world? You know, who do we think we need to draw in? And like personally, I think the biggest opportunities are connected to that supply chain logistics, moving goods in and out of. Not just the Edmonton region, but out of North America through this as a hub. Uh, the ability to do some value-added manufacturing connected to that. Because if you bring in product from, let's say, you know, Asia, you do a thirty percent Canadian, add on to that, finishing the manufacturing. Can be sold on to the rest of the world as a main and Canada product. This is an ideal place to do that, especially if you're an American company bringing pieces in, because you work at our dollar. And we have, we're the only G seven nation with a trade agreement with every other G seven nation. So there's huge opportunity there. Again, value added agriculture, where St. Albert sits, surrounded by farmland, there's lots and lots of companies that are trying to figure out. How to do value added, they're looking for space to do it, this is the right space. And honestly, even in, even in things like hydrogen, uh, we've got a project right now that we're doing some some work with municipalities on, that's an electrolyzer. Uh, so it's taking water and turning it into hydrogen. There's a real opportunity for St. Albert to play in in things like that, in sustainable aviation fuels. Uh, biodiesel, waste energy, there's a whole bunch of things that are energy space that you could also be playing in. Again, quite a bit as well in in life sciences. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity. Maybe what's been holding St. Albert back is that land that you can actually move projects into. But you're right on the edge of that and we're, we're absolutely committed to work with Mike and his team to help open that up.
Glad, glad to hear the linkages are are there and and are going to be, continue to be built stronger. So that's uh, that's, that's the message that uh will will resonate with me for sure.
Alright. I see no more questions. Um. I I don't have a lot, um, because I'm going to be part of the working group. I did hear, the only thing I wouldn't mind comment on is I heard at this shareholders meeting. Too many active agencies in the region. So there's the chambers of commerce, I don't know if you'd call them active, but you guys, um, Brit Industrial Heartland, Best Alberta. Where does the hydrogen hub hidden, fit in with all that too? So i- is there opportunities? With this shakeup to maybe combine or um. Stere the scope of of each one, so we don't have duplication and crossover of mandates.
So my two cents on that, Mayor, would be, first of all, clarifying what those mandates are and ensuring that that. That overlap, if if it exists, is real or perceived. Because I think some of that is maybe perceived. And I think the other thing is, who's chasing what cookies to get what rewards, right? What are the incentives and are they, are they aligned? Because again, all of these organizations in some regard are looking for a way to uh perpetuate existence. Which is fine, which is fine, but that has to be based on being able to provide true and real value. And so um. Our, our view right from the get-go has always been to be one of a collaborator with these other organizations. And try and ensure that there isn't duplication and there isn't overlap and those kinds of things. Our mandate from the get-go was quite clear. It was regional, federal, foreign, direct investment. And you know, what we've, what we've, what we've discovered as well is the trade side of that is also important. Because you have to nurture the soil here by making sure that organizations that have an opportunity to build and export. Are critical to also attract that investment in because that's some of it, right? Is they get to a point, I want to expand my plant, I'm looking for a hundred million dollars or I'm looking for partners. So those are very interrelated pieces. But we've got the regional mandate, we definitely want to continue to engage with the local resources, the other organizations you mentioned. Um, you know, one of them is a provincial one that I know has been uh frustrating in some regard to some of those uh other organizations. So again, to me, this is all about an opportunity to to use your words, to sort of reset. Recalibrate, come out the other side much, much stronger and much more aligned. And I think we're looking for frank feedback, quite frank. I mean, that's what I'm looking for here is, if you think some, just tell us. Sometimes what frustrates me is the issues are kind of couched in very, very friendly, we don't want to be offensive language. And that's okay, but sometimes you miss the mark. So if people really aren't feeling it, tell us. And if it's something that can be addressed, let's fix it collectively. And if it's something that needs to. And if it's something that can be addressed, let's fix it collectively. And if it's something that needs to be changed, let's let's change it. But I'm I'm, you know, I'm encouraged, I guess, by I wasn't at the shareholder meeting again, you know, the board wasn't asked to be there, our chair was, but the debrief we've gotten from Menzo. And the discussion that's happening at the board table sounds like it was quite quite, quite a good opportunity for people to sort of share their their ideas. We do have outcomes like this committee that's coming out of it, which is great. And we'll move it forward, but I'll come back to what I said at the beginning, the the mandate and the mission is something that's necessary to maintain this region's vibrancy to make sure that it's represented in all of its aspects on the global stage. And we want to make sure that we're being a good steward of that for the entire uh for the entire region.
Awesome. Well, it was um it was the number one suggestion um to be be ready or be left behind report. Actually, I don't know if they were ranked, the three suggestions, but this one was um the quick and easy first win and um I my opinion is it's gonna take a while while Alberta Industrial Heartland is over twenty years old, right? So um anyway, I I see this as a a really exciting opportunity to make it better. No more questions? Oh, sorry, Council Jolly, go ahead.
Yeah, not so much a question, but I mean, if you're looking for feedback, that's kind of really frank. In terms of the forward slash event, um appearances matter. Uh, I I recognize that it was paid for by sponsors, but you know, when you, I went, I didn't go this year, look this past one, but I went to the previous one and no one was listening to the speakers. I I think anyone who was there knows that. And from what I understand, the same thing happened at the past one. Um, there was a lot of alcohol. Um, which impacts um the impression it makes on on whoever's attending. So those are just some things that I'd be be cautious of. Yeah, that's that's all I have.
We keep using the word, let's be frank, Mayor Frank takes offense to that every once in a while. Too many Franks in this world. Alright, um, you guys are good now with no more presentation?
The the only thing we were gonna do, and I mean, this is at your, at your, at your um discretion was we wanted to just ask you a couple of questions. We've talked about some of it, but our questions were really, tell us what you think is working. And then also tell us what you think we need to focus on, like what 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 isn't really working and what do you, what would you like to see us to, you know, to try and address that or or some of those those things you're thinking. So we've covered some of that, I think, in this, in this back and forth, but I'll I'll leave that with you. If you, if you want to provide us with some feedback on, you know, give us the couple of things that you think are working well, but then what are the few things that you'd like to see us really go away and take back to the group? Um, we do have, just so you know, we have a board retreat coming up Thursday, Friday. So this is very timely to be able to go back and at least take the St. Albert perspective into that meeting.
Okay. Any other further thoughts on what's working, what you want?
Is the board retreat in St. Albert? You missed your opportunity.
No, it's at the office.
We need a conference center. The only thing I have is I think the return on investment and the value proposition just needs work, honestly. Yeah, I yes, maybe Edmonton Global wasn't directly responsible for uh English chocolates, but they had a role. So you might have or solid lines from the direct investment dotted lines to help and and I have a feeling that um I don't know for sure. But I have a feeling that probably had something to do with Dow coming into the region too, even though Dow was in the works lot longer than Edmonton Global's even been around. I think even just the presence in the in the elevation of our of our position and even phone calls from Malcolm to certain certain key individuals to just push it along. So that's even a really small bigger dotted line, but all of those six play and I've I've heard that you can't take credit for something my EDO did, but don't take credit, but just say how you assisted. I think we just need those stories a little bit better.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just picking up on that, I I'm wondering how you scan the municipalities. Like I know you, maybe you take information back from the economic development offices, maybe Chamber of Commerce, but where else do you get your information from? Um, you know, what other sources do you go out and and seek to get information from within the region? Um, you know, you know, Dow's a big one because it's flashy and you got nine billion, nine billion reasons to support that. But at the same time, the uh infrastructure needed to run that plant might create a problem for the region. Uh, I can speak firsthand in relation to that one, but how, where, I think maybe if you look to see how you where where else are you getting your input from? And maybe you are, and I just don't know. That would be my feedback.
Yeah, um, it's it's a, it's a good question. It makes me again, like just how deep to go. So we we have um quarterly meetings with all the EDOs in the region. Uh, if a project's coming forward, EDOs can also reach in anytime. There's many of them that we talk to pretty regularly uh to get insight into projects and and help nudge projects along if they need it. Uh, we also do jurisdictional scans. We do a lot of work with like Stats Canada, Hoover's, like a whole bunch of different databases that are out there. Um, we we do a lot just inside individual companies by kind of tracking the kind of the major muscle movements of some of the companies that we think have a shot at investing here in the sectors we're interested in. To kind of, you know, think about how do we influence their decision and get them more attracted. Uh, we do a lot with the Trade Commissioner Service. We're based around the world, Kansas embassies around the world, uh invest in Canada, invest Alberta, Alberta's international trade staff. So it's this mix of trying to get a good sense from inside the region, you know, even including brokers and landowners, you know, other partners, universities. Uh, and that external lens. So it's it's really a multi stakeholder approach we take that's constantly changing.
You have another? Go ahead, Council Brother.
Um, if 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 you were to ask me, I I would say come more often, tell us what you're doing. And and you you know, the old story about communicate, if you think you're communicating enough, communicate seven times what you think you are. And and so so that would be my suggestion to you because you're doing great work, uh, but sometimes it doesn't trickle down. Just a thought.
No, those are, those are really good comments. Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. I think that's it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Now I'm sure I'll be seeing more of you guys in the next couple of months.
You will. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. Have a great afternoon.
Alright, Council, um no, there's no motion because that was a presentation, but there is business arising from presentation. So this is if any one has any questions of Mr. Fletcher. I see Mike Erickson is here too. At at this point, or we can probably schedule another day, but if if you have something that just arises, poor Mike. Any questions? Mike.
Yeah.
He's gone.
If you don't want to ask Mike a question.
Go, you want Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So uh it it was just alluded that you have a a quarterly meeting with uh with Edmonton Global. I what what's the feedback process back to council on the outcomes of that?
Um, so there's, there's a a number of different meetings. So we have what are called EDO Economic Development Officer meetings, sort of staff to staff type meetings. Uh, there are also shareholder meetings. Uh, I believe those are monthly. Um, and that's where we have a shareholder rep, uh typically a senior official, CEO or designate will attend those. Um, there are, there's an annual meeting at AGM and there's also a uh mid-year update as well. There's a series of different uh types of meetings. Yeah, that makes sense.
Appreciate that. I it's when I talk about uh with some of the colleagues around the regions that what I hear, you know, I what's going on type thing. And unfortunately, this is, these are the people that make the decisions when it comes to uh raising the the hand or casting a vote about support or non-support, right? So communicate.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Communication's definitely key. Okay, any other questions? Alright, um, let's take a quick break. We are at the point in our agenda that we're on no emergent items. So we have civic and external agencies updates. So everybody get ready for that and then we'll get into council motions. Alright, it's uh two forty-two. Why don't we make it two fifty?
All right, everyone back in their chairs. And sit in the press gallery. There might be a little table for you to take notes or something. It's all good. We like having people in chambers. It doesn't make us feel so lonely. Okay, uh, let's run through the civic and external agency updates. Council Jolly, why don't I start with you?
Um, yeah, attended the youth advisory committee meeting, um, kind of more, I have more of the same. Um, and we have our next meeting coming up tomorrow. So, um, yeah, that's coming up right away. I also attended an integrating AI and business course at the U of A. It was two days, a couple of weeks ago. Um, really great course, kind of talking about the different tools that are already being used now, kind of the changes that are expected over the next while and the pace of change. Um, so that was, uh, really informative.
Awesome. Thanks for that. Uh, how about you, Council Bermansky?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, environmental advisory committee. So we met last Thursday and of course it's the new start of the new committee with one, one new member and a very fluid committee and, and a great committee. And they did just kind of get their presentation put through on consenting council, but they, you know, there's a lot of really, really good work down there and I thank them again for that. Um, so the new, uh, chair and vice chair was elected. Uh, we went through a new, um, green environment strategy that's been updated by different departments in the city. So they went through that with the committee. The committee, uh, appreciated viewing that. And, uh, a presentation on, um, climate and water and, and all those, um, things affecting our community. So again, it was the first meeting of the year and the start and the new committee, um, election, but lots of good things on the horizon. And again, a great and solid team representing that committee. Secondly, I'll go to the, uh, arts development committee. So that was a, another busy meeting. Uh, we, um, welcomed several new members to that committee and, uh, have our new chair and vice chair filled as well. And then, um, what was put through on consent today was the, the removal, the cost of removing the art from the buildings downtown for the business owners that didn't want the art on their building any longer. So, um, that's all been taken care of through the, uh, committee and, and it is the hope to find, um, new homes for those in the future. Uh, we also went in camera for a, a jury selection for, uh, poet laureate. So again, we'll be looking, uh, forward to it. Went by, it's went fast that it, that's went by already, but we'll have a new, uh, poet laureate coming up here. And, um, then we, uh, had another update on the visual arts at Fowler Park and that should be installed in, in May is, is the projection right now. So that'll be, uh, event looking forward to. We discussed mayor's celebration of the arts upcoming. That's February 29th. Um, uh, public art policy, again, uh, the one that was re-nagged today, uh, we've been discussing this for several months because we, in creating the new arts development advisory committee as it was, as it was created, there was an overlap for previous groups that judged art and did things for the city. So, policy that's worked on now, uh, I want to command our legislative and our, you know, our heads of the arts committee, they're getting it, uh, organized. So everything will run clear and no, no, um, deciding who's responsible for what. So, uh, again, that's good work on part of everyone. And, um, that's it.
Thank you. Awesome. Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On, uh, January the 26th, uh, the EMRB audit and finance committee meeting held their meeting and, uh, you heard the outcome of that meeting, uh, during the MRB briefing today. Certainly gave, uh, input on the budget and certainly gave some, uh, questions and, uh, our, uh, recommendations back to the board for their consideration. Uh, additionally, it was, um, uh, time to reestablish who the chair and the vice chair were, and it's, uh, Mayor de Blanco as the chair and, uh, Mayor Burisma as the vice chair. And, uh, so, and, and quite honestly, they retained their chair and vice chairmanship and, uh, the, uh, representation remained the same on the council, on, on the committee as well. And then on, uh, February 1st, we had the, uh, annual emergency management advisory committee meeting along with some other members of council who were there as well. So, uh, it was a, it was a great meeting. Now went through the emergency plans for the, for the city.
Awesome.
That's it.
Thanks. How about you, Council Hughes?
Yes, I have, um, so the audit committee met, I'm going to just take your thunder, Council Mckay. Um, and the RFP was approved and to go for requests, we're expecting to have it closed by the middle of February. We have a subcommittee going through the end of February to, um, choose the, uh, successful applicant. And then there's, we're hoping to have the decision done shortly after that and having the party begin their, um, audit in March. So it's actually a really tight timeline, but we are definitely moving forward on that. Um, the waste reduction committee did not meet yet, um, this past month. And for seniors, uh, we have a bunch of new people in seniors and they're extremely enthusiastic. So, um, they're very excited about, they finished off the policy that's going to come to council for the senior service awards. And they were really excited about that. And they, um, we also had a discussion about potentially that the committee could just provide some kind of feedback about how they think the, would help for DARP to rejuvenate the downtown. And we can do some kind of, um, survey or other ways to communicate with them. So they can just get that kind of public feedback, feedback from them as the public as seniors. Um, and then just for administration's, um, purview, not necessarily for action, but just so that we can get some, gather some input from their point of view. So that's kind of where that's at.
Thank you for that. Council McKay.
Uh, thanks to my fellow counselors for picking up on the emergency management meeting and also on our, um, audit. Thank you. Uh, I had a policing committee meeting on January 9th, um, as the very first one, and the mayor was unavailable. Uh, I swore in two new members, uh, of the committee. Uh, then again, we had to go through the election of the chair and, uh, vice chair and the public complaints director. Uh, the chair, uh, is the same individual that was last year, uh, Ian Sanderson, and also the vice chair being new this year is Paul Speck. And the public complaints director remains the same, uh, Kristen Comback. Um, and, uh, so I mean, uh, also attending after a couple of months away on personal leave was the detachment commander, Ryan Cormaniak is back. Uh, in his office and, um, um, we, we basically just kind of went through some of the overall, what's the next year and some of the processes and procedures. And, um, uh, that was pretty much it for that. Uh, Arrow Utilities, um, I've been meeting quite frequently in relation to some of the issues that are going on and some of the, uh, challenges of, but we had a meeting in January 26th. Uh, we restructured our committees. Um, and created, uh, four new ones. We call advocacy and awareness, audit and finance, board development, governance and human resources. And, uh, so as I'm on every one of those, uh, four committees in my role as chair. Uh, one of the, uh, issues we've also looked at is we're, we're in the process right now of, of, um, referring some of them to governance and HR around some of the, uh, action result reports, basically looking at, um, how we got to where we are today and looking at kind of doing some of those reviews. Um, so, uh, you know, there'll be a lot of work as it continues. Our advocacy committee is particularly, uh, involved with a number of different, um, advocacy, uh, issues with different levels of government. Uh, and also, uh, our, uh, we approved our auditor. We've moved to a JD P Wasserman LLP. And they're in the process of right now conducting our audit, which we're required to have under the MGA and, uh, the, uh, our plant expansion continues, uh, to move forward. And, uh, that pretty much brings me up to speed on that, except for I guess on Friday, I have my, uh, first, uh, EMRB, um, MRSP meeting in the afternoon. So, uh, we'll, I'll have a little bit on that. What's coming back is things on stormwater. And, uh, just updates in relation to some of the other initiatives that the MRSP looking at. There is also the opportunity to look at how I think it's a five-year review in relation to all the committees and what are we, are we basically doing what the, the current things or the right things, I guess is the term I'm looking for, uh, is happening. So I think that's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So on January 23rd, we had our CSAC meeting, um, similar to first kickoff meeting of the year for many groups. We did an overview of kind of what the calendar, uh, looks like, uh, general mandate for, uh, funding of community events, uh, community capital, outside agency operating funds, um, provided a, an overview of F, FCSSS. And, uh, the first, one of the first things on our agenda is to review the, the names for, uh, community, uh, recognition. So we did, did the review of, of the year's schedule. We elected, uh, new chair, uh, Emma Lefrenier and vice chair Samantha Howe. Um, and, uh, we recognized our outgoing chair, uh, uh, Sarah Vander Wolf, um, who, who left to go back to, uh, more full-time jobs. So, uh, she did a great job as outgoing chair and handed the torch over. Um, and we welcomed a number of new members, uh, to CSAC and, uh, they were all very, spoke very highly of the general orientation session that was hosted by ledge services, uh, earlier in the month. Um, they actually understood what an in-camera meeting meant. And, uh, so, uh, that was, uh, that was a good, good takeaway that they, they felt far more comfortable, uh, coming into the first meetings based on, on having that orientation. Uh, I will not be at the next meeting. Uh, I'll be away on vacation and Counselor Bermansky has, uh, graciously accepted to step in for me. So that, that'll, uh, be a smooth, smooth, uh, hand, handoff with her attending. Uh, and then I'll just jump ahead to Edmonton Salutes on January 26th. Uh, we reviewed all the reports from the chair. Again, kickoff meeting, not, uh, a whole, whole lot of new information. Um, two key points though, that's coming up in 2024 this year is the 100th year of the Royal Canadian Air Force, uh, recognition and the 700 wing in Edmonton. They are planning, uh, numerous events. So, uh, there may be something coming up. Nothing set yet with the Legion here, but, uh, there may be something coming up, uh, in St. Albert around that. And, um, we also reviewed the budget and it was recognized. Thank you to all the municipalities that continue to provide, uh, funding for, uh, Edmonton Salutes. So that's, that's a quick one on, on that.
All right. I'm glad you enjoyed that one. That's good. All right. That is it for civic and external counselors updates. We are under council motions. Uh, 11.1, Council Kilik is yours. Okay. To quickly read it in and then we'll open it up for questions.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. That council code of conduct by law 38 slash 2017 be amended to delete section 25, which requires council members attendance at meetings and official events to be recorded and reported quarterly on the city website.
Awesome. Any questions of this one before I go to the motion? Go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, through the administration. So I understand that, uh, the provincial government has made some adjustments to the MGA in relation to council codes of conduct in light of what happened down in Chestermere. Anything that happened there that would play against, uh, art and form? Perhaps us on this particular motion, one way or another.
Yeah. Thank you, Council. I think it's, it's a little bit premature to say, certainly, um, I can have Marta chime in, but the, uh, the spring legislation that will deal with council codes of conduct, uh, we've not, um, had the opportunity to see what it consists of yet.
Right. Any other questions? Okay. Accept your motion, Council Kilik. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, this, this just came about as, uh, kind of simple, um, housekeeping, I guess, and maybe, uh, view of red tape production that we, we have, uh, some staff members that, or a staff member that spends a lot of time, uh, two days a month, uh, compiling, uh, a report. And, uh, when I asked whether anybody actually looked at it or noticed if it had ever been missing, there, there was no feedback. So it, it just seemed to be an opportunity. Um, I asked if there was any history on why this even started and there was, nobody seems to be aware of, of why it, um, had actually started and, and in particular, because in the MGA and in our code of council, uh, conduct, code of conduct, uh, we, we have the, um, it's specified that we have to attend the meetings that we are appointed to and, um, that is a basic level of, of, uh, expectation. So just with that, uh, there, it seemed to be redundant that we were, um, having someone create in a, a report, um, that really summarized what we were mandated to do in any case. And that nobody was looking at it. Um, so it didn't seem to be fulfilling a purpose and it looked like an opportunity to, um, save time and, uh, get more efficient. So that's why I brought it forward.
Thank you for that, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to give a little bit of background on why this actually appeared into the code of conduct is back in 2017, there was, uh, there was just some question about whether counselors were showing up at the air assigned, uh, um, committee assignments and, uh, and so, um, the, the council at the time decided that, uh, this would not be a bad thing to do. It's just to provide a measure of accountability and transparency back to the people of St. Albert that council responsibilities were actually being followed. Now, the, the fact that, uh, people, uh, choose not to look, uh, on the website as to, uh, whether their counselors attend their assigned committee meetings or not, doesn't mean that they cannot. And the fact that the information is there is simply, uh, an accountability factor back to our community. And, uh, and I appreciate that, uh, from time to time, uh, it requires, uh, a bit of work and perhaps even a significant amount of work to put a report on to, uh, onto the web. Uh, but it serves a purpose. And, uh, if that purpose is passed, I guess council today will, uh, pass judgment on that. Uh, I for one, uh, believe that, uh, that, uh, you know, habit is, uh, is sort of supported by, um, I, regulation, if you will. It's like a, uh, why do you put a lock on the doors? Keep the honest person honest. Anyway, uh, anyway, that's my thought on this. I'll certainly listen to all the arguments, but that's the background as to why this particular, uh, piece of work was put together in the first place.
Thank you. Council Jolly.
Thank you. I'm going to try to convince you, Council Broadhead. Um, I, I, I wasn't on council at the time that this was decided, but, but I, I was definitely up in the gallery a lot. So I do know some of the history. Um, and I was also sitting on one of the committees where our member of council did not attend very often. Um, so the reason I'm going to support this motion is that since that time, we have other mechanisms that are, you know, helping keep honest people honest. Um, one of them is our reporting on our council activities, um, through council meetings. Um, and, and another is through our per diem expense reports. Um, one of the challenges I personally found with the, uh, the list that, that was compiled is that we didn't have a strong definition of what an official meeting was. Poor Mayor Heron had me, uh, grouchy about what was on my list all the time because there were, uh, disagreements about what was official and was, wasn't, um, because there is no definition. And with the per diem policy, we really do have that definition nailed down. And our attendance is covered, um, by that process. Um, so, so I'll be supporting this because that two days of time could be spent doing something else. Um, and the information is, is available through, um, through other avenues. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Council McKay.
Yeah, I'm going to support this as well. And in addition to the, uh, other two checks and balances that, uh, Council Jolly identified, you know, when we're at committees, we're on the minutes, minutes are being taken. We're recorded as being in attendance of those minutes, uh, meetings. So, uh, that's other way of, uh, identifying, uh, that we were actually in our seats now. Um, the other, the other thing that caught my attention as we were, I mean, next term, and we may not all be on the next term, but, um, you know, we'll be full time and there'll be really, this will be another, I think, just redundant in relation to, uh, the current, um, policy. So I, I just see it just being a, just an easy way of cleaning it up right now.
Thank you. Quick question to all of you. Do you have to sign it? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Because I, I was talking to some of the girls who do this work and they just look at our calendars. They don't actually go to the minutes and see if you actually tend it. If it's still in your calendar and you didn't show, it's, it's an inaccurate report too. So, um, yeah, I thought about putting this on consent, but it's good to hear some opposition, but I'll support this, Council Kilik. Anything to close?
Uh, yeah, just very briefly that I appreciate everybody's support, but when I looked at this, I, I kind of asked myself if this policy didn't exist today, um, would we, would we actually vote it in and, and debate it? And create it today with all the other checks and balances as we've spoken about MGA, code of conduct, uh, minutes per diem reporting. And, and I, I for one would probably not entertain introducing this additional level of workload. Um, we, we have the other checks and balances in place already and, and we have a good, well-functioning council that attends meetings on a regular basis without needing to, uh, to kind of keep track. So from my perspective, this is not something that I would have ever considered bringing in, um, if, if it hadn't already existed. So, uh, maybe it's, it's time, uh, it's, it's served its purpose and, uh, it's time that we can, uh, eliminate this from our processes.
Call for the vote. Voting is closed and that motion passes by majority with Council Broadhead opposed. Uh, we are on to 11.2, Council Hughes. I'll get you to read in, cause I think you've changed it. So read in what you would like to be debated.
Thank you. That the transit operations
Thank you. That the transit operations contract for the provision of third-party transit driver services is terminated with an effective date of termination of no later than July first, twenty twenty-five, that these services are brought in-house and that administration in conjunction with consultant, if need necessary, create a plan and cost analysis by the end of twenty twenty-four to bring the services in-house by July first, twenty twenty-five, with the cost of the consultant of up to one hundred thousand dollars be funded through the stabilization reserve.
All right. I have a feeling there might be some questions on this one before we go. So I will open it up. Who wants to go first? Go ahead, Counsel McKay.
Uh, just administration, um, can you enlighten me as we ever done a complete review or looked at bringing our operations in-house previous to this motion?
Oh, and sorry, we actually have, uh, Mr. McGowan, is he online now? Why don't we, why don't we take the, the public first? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That might be a better way to do it.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask if we had a presentation or something.
Just the one, um, oh, except Alberta Federation of Labor. I was looking for your name, Mr. McGowan. So, but there you are. Uh, so welcome to our council meeting. You've heard the motion. Um, you have, um, we, we welcome you and you have five minutes to, uh, say what you'd like to, uh, on this particular topic.
Well, uh, thanks. Uh, thanks to the members of council. Thanks to you, Mayor Herons. Good to see you again. Um, for those who don't know me, my name is Gil McGowan and I have, uh, the honor and privilege of serving as the elected president for the Alberta Federation of Labor, which is the largest worker advocacy group, uh, in the province, representing unionized workers in the public and private sector, including many of, uh, the people who work for the city of St. Albert, um, including the transit operators. And, uh, you know, I am not a resident of St. Albert. Uh, the closest I've come, uh, is taking my kids to your wonderful, uh, outdoor splash park, which is the best in the region. Uh, and also when I was a teenager growing up in a foreign north of St. Albert, uh, we had regular runs of this into the McDonald's in St. Albert. But, uh, so I have very fond memories of my, my time spent in St. Albert. Um, so as, because I'm not a resident, I actually initially was not going to, uh, appear before you on this issue. Uh, it's, it's a decision that should be made by, uh, the residents of the city and their representatives here on council. However, um, we at the Federation of Labor have these, uh, community groups called community action teams, uh, which are made up of, uh, our members and our supporters and they do advocacy work. Um, and, uh, we have, for some reason, we have a particularly active group in St. Albert and they pressed me to get involved in this issue. Uh, and so you probably saw the ad and the interview that I did for the Gazette. Uh, and they also encouraged me to be here today. So I'm, I'm here for them, uh, because they feel very strongly about this motion. Uh, and, um, and, uh, and just, and, and I, and from, from our perspective, uh, it, it's pretty straightforward. Um, and I'll, and I'll say three or four things. The first is that, uh, it seems to us that the city of St. Albert is paying a premium uh, for, um, the, the, the operation of your transit service and that this contract that you have at PW uh, is more expensive than it would be if you brought the services in-house. And, uh, we have come to that conclusion based on our analysis of, uh, a document that we, well, someone foiled it, uh, through freedom of information, they passed it along to us. And, uh, we crunched the numbers and to put it very, uh, succinctly, uh, the, the value of bringing it in-house is clear, right? So, um, it's a, it's a long document. You guys have probably seen it. If you haven't, I'd encourage you to look at it. But basically it looks like, uh, you're currently paying forty-one million dollars for the contract, um, which is basically seventy dollars per hour, uh, for the transit operators. If you were to bring it in-house by our calculation, based on that document and also looking at the collective agreements that you've got, uh, it would be, uh, forty-five dollars and fifty-one cents per hour versus once again seventy dollars for PW. And, uh, the in-house cost would be twenty-nine million dollars versus four, forty-one million dollars. Uh, in the ad that we put in the paper, we said a million dollars because we were trying to be conservative, not overstate the case because we understand that there might be administrative costs in terms of a transition, but, uh, that's a minimum. Um, and, um, you know, so you're paying a premium. Uh, it does probably comes as no surprise to you, coming from a labor organization, we feel very strongly that, uh, it always makes sense to bring these kind of services in-house, uh, rather than contract them out. Uh, that's been our experience in municipality, after municipality, not just here in, in, in Alberta, but across the country. Um, and it's mostly because there's a profit margin with an outside contractor. And in this case, uh, it's just the, the labor services that you're contracting with. You've got every, all the other costs, uh, in-house already. And so, uh, you know, like you're not paying for infrastructure, you're not beholden to them for infrastructure, you're doing all that stuff yourself. Yet another reason to bring it in-house. Um, we also are very conscious of the fact that the provincial government is starving municipalities like you, uh, of funding and, uh, enforcing you to consider tax increases. So this is a case, we think, pretty strongly where you can avoid increasing the tax base and actually deliver a service and actually find some savings that you can reallocate elsewhere. Um, and then the final thing is accountability, right? When it's in-house, you have the direct line of sight, uh, to the service that's being provided. You don't have a middleman. Um, and, uh, and so you can deal directly with your employees. So I guess our question is, you know, why should this group of city workers be outside of the city while you have such a good relationship with all your others? Um, and so I, I, I think I'm out of time, so I'll wrap up there, but I just encourage you, uh, to at least consider uh, revisiting, taking a look at this issue, uh, if not actually, you know, like, I'm not going to tell you to rewrite the contract. I'm just saying, just look at it. Because on the surface, on the face of it, it looks like this is a no-brainer. Thanks.
Thank you. Is, Counsel Bukai has a quick question, if that's okay?
Right. Thanks for appearing in front of us today, Mr. McGowan. I appreciate, um, your, uh, input. Uh, but you did make a reference in relation to the fact that you were able to crunch the numbers or somebody within your organization was able to crunch the numbers. Would those, uh, would that report be available to council?
Uh, it's internal, it's our internal calculations. It's not a formal report or analysis, but we'd happy, happy to show our numbers to you for sure. Um, and, you know, I, I would encourage you, administration, maybe, uh, you know, this might actually be an opportunity to bring someone from the outside to look, you know, give you advice based on looking at the contract, which I think you have, looking at the collective agreement, which I think is also publicly available. Um, we're happy to show our math. Um, I'm not going to claim that it's better than anyone else's, but someone should do the math and it should be public.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think somebody should look at the math, look at the math, but I mean, that would require input from all different levels, all different sorts.
And we, and we'd be happy to cooperate, uh, understanding that it would just be one input that you guys would consider.
All right. I appreciate that. That was just my only question. Thanks.
All right. I see no more questions, Mr. McGowan. So I will thank you for your attendance. Uh, you're welcome to, uh, log off and switch over to our Zoom meeting. It's, this meeting is being televised live, uh, so you can watch the debate. But we'll open it up now to council. Any questions of administration? Go ahead. Yep.
I, I just want to make sure there's no presentation from administration or anything like that. All right. I, I mean, I guess I'm just going back to my original question. Um, have we ever looked at, uh, or have we done a recent look, um, in-house, uh, bringing these operations in-house?
Through the Chair to Counsel Mackay, there had been a BIR answered in twenty-ten, November twenty-ten, as well as updated calculations in twenty-fifteen. And, uh, as our contracts were being uh, renewed with the bus operators, it, it was a cursory look to ensure that we were still making the right decision. Uh, most recently in twenty-twenty-three, when the bus contract was most recently renewed.
And, uh, I'm fairly confident that I know this one, but I better ask it anyway. So when Ernst &amp; Young did the operational and fiscal review, um, transit operations really wasn't on the table because at that particular time we were looking at moving into the RTMSC. Is that correct or is that an incorrect assumption?
Certainly transit did not factor into the final report, as you well know. Um, I think the EMTSC would have had a role in it, but I can't unequivocally say that. If you'll leave it with us, we'll have to, to ask.
All right. I, I mean, I just was thinking, I mean, if we already looked, if it was part of the Ernst &amp; Young review, you know, then there'd be some, maybe some valuable in front, insights that would be sharing. Um, all right. Thanks. Those are two of the pressing ones that I have.
Counsel Hughes.
Thanks. I just have a couple. So I'm, I think that the contract was signed about a year and a half or just over a year ago is right. So I was thinking before, I'm like, hey, the financial analysis, then why wasn't it done? And I'm guessing again, it was because we're thinking we're moving to regional transit. So for just simplicity sake, it's like, let's renew the contract because it's going to be changing on its own as regional transit moves. Would I be wrong with that assumption?
Yeah, if I could take an initial stab and then, uh, Mr. Saunders can jump in. Um, part of the calculus was the, the potential for the EMTSC, certainly. Uh, the other part was, uh, based again on, you know, the, the term cursory is used, but our analysis, we did not see, um, my financial savings to be made by bringing it in-house at that time. And so we were comfortable signing the contract. So I, I would say it was both those elements, Counsel.
Okay. Um, okay, because we still haven't seen your financial analysis, um, that's been completed. So if there is one, I would still love to have it shared with council. Um, the other thing I'm wondering is the employee turnover rate in the city, I'm looking at you, Ryan, because you're here and you sat here the whole time. You might as well get a question out of it, right? Um, the employee turnover in the city, it's less than ten percent, right? Do we know what the employee turnover rate is for the transit drivers? No. Okay.
I, I don't believe we do. So again, we contract out an end result service. How that's managed internal, um, we do not have insight on that.
Okay. Um, so I only have anecdotal type of, um, information and we don't have an idea of what their benefits are or anything like that as it compares to the city. In just general terms, I don't want the entire thing listed, but is there, I, I know their sick leave is different and they don't have a pension. Is there anything else that's substantial?
I, I would say yes, and that's probably something we'd want to discuss in camera.
Yeah, okay. I'm not asking for those details right now. Um, okay, that's it for now. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Broadhead.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would like to go in camera for a discussion around this. Uh, certainly, uh, Ms. Caulfield, uh, posed some questions that I would like to ask and she suggested they would be best asked in, in camera. So, and then.
Do you have anything that you want to ask publicly now?
Um, not at this moment.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counsel Calick.
Okay.
Casey's got some public ones. And then, um, I'll go to you for a motion. Thanks. Counsel Calick.
Uh, thank you. Um, just two, uh, question in terms of when, when the contract uh, would come up for renewal in twenty-twenty-eight, the kind of financial analysis that, uh, Counselor Hughes has asked for and proposed to be funded with, uh, the help of a consultant, that is something I imagine we would undertake um, in early twenties or late twenty-six, twenty-seven. So we, we would undertake this level of, um, financial analysis, uh, in any case, prior to renewal of, of the contract, just to make sure that it's either saving money or costing money, or what would it be better to bring it in-house, et cetera, et cetera? Is, is, is that about right?
Yeah, through the Chair to Counsel Calick, that is correct.
Okay, so this, this is accelerating, uh, work. This motion is accelerating work that would be similar to what would be undertaken later in the process in any case?
I, I, I would say that the, the financial analysis component would be similar, right? Uh, and so the way we would approach this, if we were looking at the, the twenty-twenty-eight timeline is the business case, right? Um, does it make sense to re-sign a contract or does it make sense to look at another delivery mechanism? That would be it. Um, this motion actually directs us, right, to, to take it in-house, right? So it's part of this motion I would offer is, is what would be looked at. Um, the other piece is, um, you know, to do the fulsome accounting, to include the consultant as Counsel Hughes has noted in her motion would be a request, um, for funding, right, to support that at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Hughes.
Okay, we've came up a couple more quick things here. So as far as I'm aware, we've actually never done like an external consultant review of transit services. Like, as, as long as I've been on term, we've never, like, we've had a reviewed in twenty-fifteen. That's what actually spurred me is I remembered, think, hey, we didn't have a review again when this like came up again. And so that's kind of what triggered me, but I don't remember even then it was very cursory done. It was not in-depth, right? So I know we're saying we could do it in twenty-twenty-eight, but that has not been done in the past for any other renewals. Am I wrong on that?
Through the Chair to Counsel Hughes, uh, you're correct. I, I don't believe there had been a consultant engaged to perform this exercise, no.
Okay. And the other thing I had was, um, that I realize the contract ends at the end of twenty-twenty-eight, um, but that we have an option with a sixty-day notification to change the, to end the contract from either side if we wanted to. So we can do this evaluation at any time, really. We don't have to wait till twenty-twenty-eight to be able to both evaluate it and then make a decision, right?
Um, u- ultimately, yeah, I mean, this council could choose to reevaluate it anytime they want. Uh, there are, uh, mechanisms in the contract to that end. Um, but there is also, I, I would offer that if we want to talk about the specifics of what that might look like, that would be an in-camera discussion.
Okay. And then the last question is, and I, because I couldn't remember, Brian, is that whenever we do a new employee, I can't remember if the cost of benefits was twenty-two, twenty-three or twenty-eight percent. Cause I know it went up a little bit. And so is it, what number is it for cost of benefits within the city?
That's in camera. That's in camera.
No, we've discussed it in, in budget before, right? The cost of benefits isn't a secret, right?
Okay. My understanding is this is a public item and we are budgeting that.
Okay, so I just know that you've, you've told us before what the number was. I just don't know what, I'm not asking what transit is. I'm just asking what our current standard is that we get a new employee on, what do we pay? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
We did for permanent full-time employees. We adjusted that number from twenty-two point five to twenty-three point.
Okay, perfect. I thought it was twenty-three, but I wasn't sure if I was totally off and I thought it was twenty-eight. That's it. Thank you.
Sorry, Counsel Hughes, I thought that would be personal labor related, but okay. All right. I see no more, um, hands up right now. So Counsel Broadhead, I know that they've prepared the motions. I'll get to throw it. Um, there you go. It's on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that council moving camera to discuss a matter pursuant to the sections twenty-four, one A, C, D, twenty-five, one C, and twenty-seven, one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
All right, call for the vote. Voting is closed and that passes unanimously. Um, I'm just gonna leave my laptop here. So I don't need to worry about the breakout room. I'll just speak on the mic.
Get this motion debated and voted on because then we have, do you have a lot in camera?
I've got a few items.
You? Okay. All right, you guys got the motion to reconvene in public?
If they can put it up on the board when they get a chance.
So I haven't accepted your motion, so.
Thank you.
Willing to change it.
Yeah.
Let's see, and then we'll open it up for questions again.
Okay, so based on the conversations that we've just had and a very wholesome discussion with administration, can you put it up on the screen? There we go. That 100,000 be approved from the stabilization reserve for administration to retain a consultant to develop an implementation plan and corresponding financial analysis for bringing transit drivers in-house and that the implementation plan of financial analysis be presented to council by Q1 of 2025.
Okay. Or accept that one. Is there any questions on the new motion or anything else? Oh, so there was a question that you had, Council Kilik, that we thought was going to be more appropriate in public, so.
Uh, yeah, I think the.
But now that the motion's changed.
The motion has changed from. The first motion was to automatically bring the drivers back in, whether it save money or cost money. Um, but this revised motion now says we're doing the analysis. And. Yeah.
It's little.
It's right in the top of your screen here, too. Yeah, that's okay. So you're good, Council Kilik?
I'm just trying to.
I can come back to you.
Digest it here.
Okay.
And I still am, um, would would ask Counselor Hughes is is if the analysis was done and it proved to cost a million dollars, would we still do it under the wording of this this motion?
No, and even with the original in motion, even though the intention was to say to do it by this date, it was also that it was to move forward with that assumption that we'd do it by this date, but that not that it couldn't have checks and balances prior to for council to come back and have a reevaluation, just like we did with the 911 business case. But with this one, it's very clear, like I just, I want the analysis, then we'll talk about next steps if there are any. And the timing of those.
Good.
Yeah, I I would just like to to ask, uh, let services are legal. It is that the way this is interpreted, that this is just to do the analysis without automatically going to that implementation step?
That's right. We would just do a study and bring the results of that study, the financial analysis and the implementation plan to council by that date and present it potentially with some recommendations or just for information. And then council would be able to direct administration at that time to take any further steps if necessary.
Thank you for that verification.
Council McKay.
Respectfully, I don't see it that way, the way the motion currently reads. I mean, it says develop an implementation plan and corresponding financial analysis. If we were going to do the financial analysis and investigate the possibility of implementing a in-house transit program based on the findings of the financial analysis, then I could see that happening, but.
You feel like the financial analysis needs to come first?
I, yeah, I mean, I, my sense of it is, is this says develop an implementation plan, which means to me, which means to me on the motion that and and you're more than welcome to explain it to me. Um, that that we're already made the decision and that we're going to move ahead with an implementation plan and the financial analysis. For me, and I'll quit talking here so you can answer, but for me, I would say we should develop a financial analysis looking at the pros and cons of bringing the transit program in-house and then move forward in relation to next steps.
Okay, and I hear what you're saying. The intention of this motion is not to assume anything, but the entire implementation plan will also cost us something. So this is really about a thorough picture of what it will cost to get us there, what will it cost once we're there? And then to compare what will be done in the event that the financial analysis proves to be beneficial. We choose to move forward on it, then the question is, of course, when would this be implemented? But if if this is all done and we say we want to implement it on for whatever year or for whatever date, that plan is already done for administration. They don't have to go back and say, okay, now we need another year to figure this out. If they went back and figured out another year, the implementation plan could actually change the costs. So this is just about, here's the package in its entirety. I understand what's the workload, what are the costs? It's going to come back to council and then we can discuss next steps if there are any, but when or if there are any next steps. That's that's the intention is just give me the full package and don't give me part of it. But there's not a presumption anywhere in here to say that we're actually ceasing transit services at any time. So because of that, we're just taking the next step to evaluate it. So there's no assumption on my part that we have actually ended, and I don't think anybody here could read it that we have ended it. It's just give me the plan and give me the costs.
Um, I'm trying to remember you. You brought it up, and actually, that was one I was going to refer to as the 911 plan. And for me, when we looked at that, I thought that was a little bit more clearer. And I would try, although I can't remember the exact wording, I would probably. Um, I would, I would dig through it and probably find it, but I would, that to me seems cleaner than this one. Just from. If I was just picking up the newspaper tomorrow and I read this motion, to me, it would be that we're developing an implementation plan and the corresponding financial analysis and then and it might. I I might think that we've already made the decision and that we're moving forward. That's all I'm saying. Whereas if we just said that if we were investigating bringing our transit drivers in-house and the associated costs and implementation plan, then to me, that makes, then I'm cleaner.
Okay, so in my defense, administration wrote this for me, and I said, it looks good, and I had three minutes to do the revision.
I'm.
Would it?
I've had three minutes to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
They prepared it in advance and said this is something that would be feasible for them. What if we if we put in there to develop a potential implementation plan, would that be enough to satisfy your concerns?
Well, why don't we? I mean, I I don't want to.
I just, I want them to have the full package of what they have to do. And if this ever were to happen in the future, again, the implementation plan would not change. And so staff has that resource, whether it happens in two years, three years, or 10 years, they can always go back and say this is how we would do it if we were to do it. So if we're going to pay 100 grand, I'd rather get something, get everything than some of it.
Okay, but then, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, if, I mean, like you said, if administration proposed this for you and you agreed, I mean, are you prepared to look at it friendly to say, I don't know, potential does it? I just, I just liked the way I said it. Now I can't remember how.
I don't know what you said.
Sorry, we're not, we're not doing friendlies anymore because it affects how everybody votes.
No, good point. I forgot that. Anyways, that's my challenge with this.
Okay, I can't, I can't help that other than tell you that my intention is what I just said. And administration brought this forward with the same intention. So that's all I can tell you.
Okay. Council Broadhead.
I just a question of administration. Is it, is it, is that enough time to do it?
Is that a what? Sorry?
Through through the chair, you, Council Broadhead. I I think that Q1 is a doable timeframe. We can look at that and we can keep the communication going if we find there are any constraints. But I I think that that would be enough time to at least get us to a point where we're going to have information readily available for Q1, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Council Jolly, you're good? Okay. Another question, Council McKay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to ask administration just to reconfirm that their understanding of the motion on the floor is is that they will take $100,000 from the stabilization review reserve, put out a RFP looking for a consultant that will look at what?
Um, so two things, one will be to craft, if we were to bring transit in-house, what would that pathway look like? And then the full costs of that pathway, but for all intents and purposes, um, that we would then bring to council to make a determination on whether you say execute this or don't. Thank you.
You have more questions, you said? Okay, go ahead.
But enough time, our discussion in in camera covered a number of things. Those would be considered in the implementation plan, correct?
So this would be, um, as far as I'm concerned, my interpretation of this, it would be an implementation plan that was corporate-wide to enable in-house transit services. Yes, so it would take into factors across all departments, across the entirety of the corporation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Going once, going twice, because I'm going to accept it, and then we're going into debate. All right, go ahead, Council Hughes.
Okay, so I had all these things that's going to stay in debate, and I'm not going to say them now. Okay? Um, so I'm gonna try to keep this as short and sweet as possible. I realize this has not been a county priority on our actual strategic plan. However, I honestly believe that this is one of our top priorities, which is just this proper management of our resources, of human resources, our. Assets and our money and. There has been questions brought forward now about whether or not it would be better suited to do it in-house versus contracted out going forward. Whether the date, well, what date that changes over, that's for for the discussion. What we have not had is a thorough discussion or fear thorough review of what are the actual costs to do it? Everything as far as point ten and upwards has never looked at the numbers in detail and looked at the real costs and risk analysis of it. For any council to actually make a proper decision, even when it came in twenty fifteen. It was a very short discussion and it was not a thorough discussion of looking at every single. Potential consequence of this. So what this motion is to do is to have, we're gonna have an external source do it so that A, it will be. Uh, more impartial, we don't have any questions about impartiality, not that staff would not be, but I don't want any questions. And second of all, it takes the workload off of staff, so um so that way we are not increasing exponentially their workload to accomplish this task. But what this now will let us do is have a complete picture of everything that's going to be involved if we were to implement it, how it will be implemented and what will be the costs? And what will be the risks and what's the everything we have to consider? At that point, we can make a decision about should we do it and when we should do it. And and that will give us and any other council that wants to have it a much larger picture of what we should be doing regarding this outsourcing. When this moved over in nineteen eighty six, St. Albert was a much smaller community. There was no woodlands, there was no La Combe Parque East, it was just starting started, there was no Deer Ridge, there was no North Ridge, there was like, it it was such a smaller community when this decision was first made. And now to unravel this, everything in life is easier to get into than out of, and apparently this is no exception. So what I would just love to see is we have a complete list review of what happens and a complete review of what the potential savings, costs, risks and benefits would be. And staff don't have the time to do that and it just, we don't have the ability, we've never had that information. But we have done a thorough review for the nine one one on the potential we could save three hundred thousand. And there is a potential here that we could save significantly more than three hundred thousand, but to be honest, I don't know what that file number is anymore, because there's a lot of things that we don't know. So what I need to know is know what we don't know, so we then we can actually make that decision. Is it three hundred or is it less? But I do know that this council has been very open to trying to look for ways outside of the box. To save the taxpayer money, especially if it's in a larger picture. And just because we look at it doesn't mean we're committing to it, as you saw with the nine one one, we looked at it, we reevaluated it and we said, it's just not worth it to us. And that may come in play for this place, but if there is a savings and if it is a possibility. I would love to be able to say that all the employees that work under St. Albert were treated the same. And had the same level of benefits and had the same pension and had the same. Reason to stay with the city. So, but we will not know that until we do this analysis. So the the reality is that our churn rate or our employee retention rate is very high in the city. I don't know what it is. With the third party, but I would suspect. That we would they that they train them and then they go to someplace where they can get union like full benefits, because why not? And then you're training more and more people and then that cost goes up, and I realize that our cost may not go up, but the service to our residents is then changes. So I'm just asking council to have an open mind and to recognize that this is a question that needs to be answered. And that this was an investment that will help us make a very thorough decision about which way to go. Hopefully, and if there is savings and if there is a reason to move forward, we can then discuss next steps and timing. And if we recognize there is not the savings that we thought, then we have a full picture, we can justify our decision. That's it. Thank you.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Hughes for uh. I yeah, for working the uh the motion, um. I I have to tell you, I um. Been in the business for as long as I have, I was I was uh struggling to see where uh. Where the uh. Advertised million dollars in savings was coming from um that hit the paper and. And so I was somewhat reluctant to to go down this path, but but the point of. Of doing a forensic on what it would cost us to do this, I think is 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 worthy work. And positions, I think, uh. Both administration and councils to make a uh an informed decision. Because this will come back for sure, whether it's in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty nine or whatever. Because the question will go away, because there's there's certainly. Uh, benefits to having uh employees in-house, there are. But it comes at a cost, and so what is that cost to the city of St. Albert? And we need to know what that is. What the implications uh of bringing people in-house are. And then we can make a decision on what's best for the city of St. Albert. But in the absence of that information, it's difficult to make an informed decision. So I like the way you reworded your uh motion uh basically to to understand what it would take and then uh. Make the motion, so. I too, looking to be as efficient as possible as a community. Uh, and treat our people appropriately. Uh, so we need to be able to make good decisions around our employment and uh. Go from there and I think this will help. Thanks.
Council Bremetsky.
Uh, first of all, through the mayor, I want to thank Counselor Hughes for bringing this forward. I know she's put a ton of work and time into it, so I appreciate all the effort there. Um, I do see this as as due diligence and providing information to administration that they're going to need at some point in time. And through our discussion, we've realized there's many crossroads that could could vary, you know, the outcome of this, but again. Contracts have to be renewed, so someone has to do the. The research prior to that time or any the years before that, so. Um, I think I I think this is a great idea and it's a small amount to ask for having all the facts in front of us to make the best decision possible.
Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just recognize that the time and effort that. Administration has already put into several memos that we've received and. Uh, background or information and and the details that were provided in in camera, uh, ob- obviously, a lot of. Lot of good work and background information has already been provided, so first off, um, that that should be recognized. Uh, the the second one is that I I would say certainly from my limited experience with uh St. Albert Transit is that. Uh, the drivers do a great job and that that was absolutely evident during Snowflake Festival. Uh, where they were working uh overtime shifts, uh, clearly PW brought in some really good people. Um, and I had very good reports from from residents on on the service that was provided. In fact. I had a significant number of positive comments about park and ride. Uh, and the drivers in particular, uh, getting people to the right place. So that that should also not go unrecognized, but um, that being said, a hundred thousand dollars to. Do an investigation that potentially could lead to uh millions of dollars worth of savings yet to be determined. Uh, is probably a good uh investment to take a uh independent uh third-party deep dive into it and. See where we end up. So uh we we'll have the facts and data in front of us in Q one and we'll be able to make a decision at that time.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. Um. So if this motion, if the purpose of this motion was to put us on a course to spend more, to pay people better, um, I could probably support it. Um, but but that's not what this is trying to achieve. It's not trying to um increase how much we're paying and 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 compensating people. Um, I I'm really tired of spending hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars on studies. Um, the the presenter earlier made an important comment that on the face of it, uh, it appears that we reduce our costs by bringing the service in-house, but. On the face of it is is really a thoughtful recognition that many services like this, um. Are are more complex uh than they they appear with a cursory review. So, you know, we heard today that that our um. Analyses in in twenty ten, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty three that that delved much deeper um into the 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 issue than the simple cost of our service contract. Um, all supported a continuation of um outsourcing. Um, so thanks to administration for always looking at at ways to be responsible with um. With how the the municipality manages manages its money, um. But really, my my educated guess is that if this motion were to pass, we'd spend, you know, a hundred K on consultants. And they tell us that the cost not only to set up the service, but but also to 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 uh pay for kind of ongoing expenses would be prohibitive prohibitive. That's. That's my bet. Um, our our taxes are already expected to rise significantly over the the next decade, so I I just can't. Can't justify spending another a hundred thousand dollars on on a a study, um, so I cannot support this motion. Thank you.
Is that everyone? All right, um. This is such a different motion from what I walked into today, uh, so I do appreciate that because the wholesale. Let's just take it in-house by the end of this year was I could not support. Um, so now you're asking us to do some work, which uh will require outside consultation, um. Uh, and you've got the money in the motion there, which is good, uh, and an extended timeline, which is good, uh. And I and I support that in in many ways. My question right now is, when do we do this work? And as like, I'll just, I, we've spent a lot of money on uh this kind of work in the past. And I'm trying to rack my brain if we've ever actually pulled the trigger and changed service delivery or changed how we did things to save those dollars. But we do spend the money on the consultants and we have, um, we actually have a report in our inbox right now on the amount of money we're spending on consultants to do this kind of work. I think it should be done before the next contract, for sure, hundred percent for sure, um. But it, I don't think it should be done at this time for for a couple of reasons. First of all. We just all got back from strategic planning and Mr. Fletcher was, you know. Politely saying to this council that that his staff is at capacity and they're stretched, and it says right here in the background or that if this is passed. Even though we're using consultant, obviously, Tim and Will will be on the phone and doing work with the consultant, um. And so, you know, anything, anything like this that is not part of our strategic plan does impact and delay and defer activities that we have. Approved in our council strategic plan and. I I'm very cognizant of our capacity issues right now. Couple of the, one of the reasons I wa- I don't want to do it right now is a lot of it can't be discussed publicly, but the risks that we have been told um uh. Of going down this path are high, very high. Um, based on other municipalities trying to do this before their contract was over, um, based on, you know, on. Union negotiations and labor issues. I'm reading from our staff's confidential background, a a high caution and a high recommendation not to do this at this time. So my struggle right now is, do we do it now and drop a few other things? Or do we do it uh when the risk is much lower, when the contract is nearing its its conclusion and 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 this would be fantastic work to do at that time? And that's something I would say to Mr. Fletcher now, if you would, you should think about that, because that kind of financial analysis is important. Um, but we've seen, council, we've all seen some numbers that indicate that our staff who are highly qualified, do this every day. Do not believe this will save us money, so uh at this point, I'm, it's a hundred thousand dollars that I don't want to spend right now. It's not the the work. But I don't want to waste the money at this time, so Counselor Hughes, um, if this passes, you know, it'll be good work, but if it fails. Let's reconsider it. Uh, when is the contract up again? Sorry.
Twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, that's in twenty seven, like the next council, this would be great work for the next council. Uh, anything close?
Oh, yeah. So here's the situation, when we look at this and we do the evaluation, this data will still be valid when the next contract comes due. And the time to do this data analysis is not twenty twenty seven, because it may take six months, the implementation plan may say that it takes a year, we don't know. And so I want to make sure that they understand, the staff understands that in the event the council chooses to move and change in-house. That we have a clear, that's why I want the implementation plan in there, is that we have a clear idea of exactly what is entailed and how long it will take and how much it will cost. And that way staff can use that document and maybe they'll say, we actually need two years to do the whole thing. I don't know. I don't know how complicated this is going to get, but what we're giving them is the maximum amount of time. That in the event the council said we're gonna do it and we want to do it for the end of next contract, staff have the maximum amount of time to prepare and achieve the goal. But to do it at the last minute will then create a crisis situation and ultimately it will not be able to be finished by the end of that contract. So in a sweet spot, maybe you do this in three or four months starting now, but really, there's there's nothing that will change between now and the end of the contract that we can't foresee. The contracts are already written, the costs are already predetermined, all we will have now is just the data to have the analysis and then it's about if we should do it and then timing. What we do not have is a thorough investigation to date. What was done in twenty twenty in the last year, which was also just preempted because the Transit Commission hosted in twenty twenty five, in twenty fifteen and twenty ten, were not detailed analysis. So if we're seriously considering it, that is where the detailed analysis needs to be done. Not just a rubber stamp of continuing what we had, but saying what should we do and really look at it with a deep dive. That is what this will do. In the event that we say that this is a better decision to do it, staff have the complete plan of what to do and they can come back with a thorough discussion of what is a reasonable timeline. I understand that this will have some work on Will and we'll have some work on on Tim and and some of the staff. But that's not going to change whether to do it now or do it in twelve months from now. So, and if they need more time with the consultant, they're welcome to always come back. Communication's always open in two ways between council and administration. So this is not a study, this is a plan, and yes, it is going to be complex. But that will give us everything that we need to know to make a decision and allow administration everything that they know if they choose to go one way or another, and we can then justify our decision to ourselves. And whether or not this will be, I don't think this will be a public document, but we can tell the the public that we have done all the homework to make sure that we decision making is the best decision possible. So that is why I'm just, I'm asking council, just keep an open mind on this. There's a potential that the employees could have a a better working situation and whether the taxpayer could save money. And in the event that it does not, we can actually put this to bed. But I I don't want it just a preliminary, yeah, it looks good enough. And certainly, the, when you look at the back of the napkin, it may not include everything, and that is why I'm asking to include everything and not make presumptions. And we can make a thorough decision at that time. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Mayor Heron and Council Jolly opposed. Next on our agenda, I think, oh, before we do, I think next on our agenda is actually um announcements, is it not? Just go into it. I just wanted to, actually, I don't normally do this, but um. I wanted to just make a comment. I was away last week, as many of you know, during a crisis with water and uh it was a little confusing and there was, there was some. Communication going back and forth between Mr. Fletcher and myself about uh users of water, but. That's not really what I want to talk about today. I just wanted to note in case. Anyone is listening, who knows who listens to these council meetings, but um. When when the crisis occurred, it's my understanding that the entire region responded and reduced their water efforts for sure. But that St. Albert was one of the better responders. Uh, there was a tweet from the city of St. Albert that said. Uh, that we had reduced our water um draw by twenty percent. Helping man, the region managed through the current situation while repairs were underway at the water treatment plant. Twenty percent in my understanding is is one of the higher ones in the region. I think the city of Edmonton was much less. Uh, so I just want to thank the residents. Honestly, that's all I wanted to say is you guys responded. To a water crisis, you know, obviously, this is not a crisis of the source of the water, it was how how we were treating it. But it does um. Allow every resident in Albert to rethink how they use their water in in the community, because. Although Northern Alberta seems to have um an abundance, we're not very far away from Southern Alberta where reservoirs are draining faster and faster. Uh, the provincial government is looking at drought conditions and and I think they're talking in May about some. Higher level of of restrictions, so thank you, state of residents for responding, uh, you guys did a great job and keep it up in case it um ever happens again. I just wanted to make that point. That's it. We need a motion to go in camera for, oh, do you have an IR? Go ahead.
Super Cheryl reminded me that I had an IR, so thank you, Cheryl. So I just wanted to read those two in. They've been submitted a while ago. They're not surprises, but we want to read them into the record. That what is the 2023 overtime and fire and emergency services compared to 2020, 2021, not A? And 2022, is it the same or trending in a different direction? And what is the plan to reduce overtime expenses and fire services, which were almost a million dollars in 2023, without just hiring more staff? What is or when do you expect to have the plan to address overtime financial demands? When Fire Hall four opens and there's less staff to handle the fire operational demands in the four fire halls? And then the second one is why is there currently only one aerial fire truck with the city? When there's a motion on the books not to sell the second aerial fire truck? What was it sold for? And what is the plan to have a second one available for when the first one is in service? How many days or weeks was the current aerial fire truck in service in 2023? And when was the aerial fire truck for Fire Hall number four expected to arrive? And I, I guess I should also add in there, and when was, did I have it in there? When was it sold? Yes, what was it sold for? I'd like to know when it was also sold. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any IRs or PMs? Okay, now I need a motion to go on camera. How about you, Council Jolly?
Sure. Cheryl, can you help me out with that one?
Section 241A.
That council moving camera to have a confidential dialogue with the CAO pursuant to section 2418 of FOIP.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. I will see you guys in council lounge.